Custer County Board of Commissioners meeting will come to order. Let the record show today is February the 5th, 2020. The time is nine o'clock a.m. Mr. Bob, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk to the Board, would you conduct the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Candor.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board, Kelly Capper, present.
What are we gonna do with this guy?
He's got too much time on his hands.
No, I'm working over here.
Don't give him a mic.
Yeah, he's working. Don't expect to hear anything from the attorney for a while, because he's working. He is on a mission. Audience introduction, Mr. Lynn, would you like to begin?
Lynn Legree, Airport Board. Bob Jolly, Airport.
Ron Legree, as concerned citizen.
Ashley Powell, student.
Okay, welcome. Good morning, thank you for being here. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, I just wanted to welcome Ashley Powell. She's a student at Pike's Peak Community College, taking a government course, and asked if she could sit in, and of course, everybody's always welcome to sit in, if it's okay with the Chairman. Normally, we reserve comments and questions for specific times, but is this something that really is perplexing you, Ms. Ashley? Please raise your hand, and hopefully, the floor will recognize you, and we'll help you get your answers. So, thank you for coming, and congratulations on being in college, and good luck with your government class.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry. So, this is kind of research for you today, to observe a...
Yes, sir.
Government body functioning?
No, you mean sausage being made.
Well, it depends on who's speaking, I guess.
That's right.
We're not gonna go any deeper than that, are we? Yeah, so...
Squack, sack.
Disregard all of that.
Yeah. The Chairman will dictate there will be no ripping of any documents today.
Yeah.
I couldn't help it, I couldn't help it, I had to do it. I know, you wanted to, didn't you?
That was his line.
That's right, that's right. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I have none, sir.
Nor do I.
No.
Approval of minutes? I have none. Commissioner Items, Commissioner Prince, would you care to start us off?
I didn't have any formal meetings yesterday, other than the West Cliff Town Meeting, and I just, as I mentioned to both of you, our draft letter concerning the single point of contact for conversations with CDOT in the fiber project, I presented that, and Paul Link, he said he thought that was just fine, so he was willing to sign it at that time. Also, Buck Wensel was there, and he read it, felt it was acceptable also, so I assume they'd last well, sign it.
Okay, yeah, it's on the agenda later, so...
Oh, is it, I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
Yeah, first item underneath it. Okay, anything else?
I have nothing else.
Mr. Candor.
Couple things, reviewed the landfill applicants, are we still gonna work that?
Yes, and you know what, if you don't mind, oh, it's on there, we're good.
Okay, and talked with a lot of people, because of snow and stuff, and the cold, not a lot we can do about the cold. But, let's see, the, I did get a comment on this system, this, the, how they hear us on this meeting, this live streaming. Couple people have said it's no better. So, I don't know what that means, either we're not getting close enough, or something's getting scrambled, so I've talked to Vern. Vern said there may be an issue with the servers, there's different, two different servers, and they're not syncing up or something, I talked to him yesterday a little bit about it. So, maybe it's something I should think about when I talk.
I think we need to utilize the mics a little better, I'm not sure.
I think that's probably...
Because the day we started out, it seemed to really make a difference, so...
And I asked Vern about it in the meeting yesterday, he said, "Boy, is this making a difference, you guys are coming through loud and clear," but sometime to sit back and start talking, and it fades out.
Yeah.
Just a comment.
Good point, thank you.
And then, I did work with Gary, I sent him that CDOT letter, or the CenturyLink letter, and I'll be working with him to make sure the people that have issues with the CenturyLink cleanup will get the word, and we'll send it to CenturyLink. And then, the revised CDOT letter, I have, and I just sent you guys a copy of that, so it's, I had them take out the, anything that had nothing to do with the right-of-way, if in the future, they want to buy some fibers from us when it's in, that's something that worked, but I just sent it to you. And I'll send the same copy to the two towns, and we'll figure out how to coordinate their input and ours, if there are any comments, so maybe we can do that later on.
My email's loading now, so I'm assuming it's loading yours.
All right, and, let's see, yeah, that's it, I will talk with Paul and Steve soon as we're done today.
Okay, thank you, sir. I had a couple of things this morning, obviously, we just met yesterday, so Rusty is planning on coming in this morning, as soon as they get that equipment fired up at the landfill, he's gonna come in and review those applications and rank them as well. I spoke with Donna, she said you guys actually did rank them, huh? Okay, and then, so I gave her my ranking this morning, verbally.
She was not there when we looked at them, so...
I called her back and talked to her about what we did, so she knew that you and I had reviewed them, and then we ranked them.
And then, I also spoke with Rusty this morning about the date for interviews. He requested that we try to move that up the calendar, as far as we could.
He wants to bail.
So that it would increase the transition time that he would have to spend with the new hire.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So, I'd like to look back then, and see... I would be available the 12th.
I have a meeting on the, in the afternoon, if you did it in the morning, I would be fine on the 12th.
Okay. I'm in Denver on the 9th, 10th, and 11th, but I could be home sometime in the afternoon on the 11th, if the 12th doesn't work, the 12th in the morning works for me.
My goodness, that...
That would gain us eight days.
See, we don't...
The Arkansas Basin Roundtable Meeting in Tubbo is on the 12th, but I know Keith will go to that, I was planning on going to it, but I certainly don't need to.
Yeah, Keith, I can do the 12th in the morning.
Okay.
Nine o'clock?
Right now, that would be a tentative date.
Nine to nine thirty?
Let me shoot Donna an email real quick, because she can talk to Rusty when he comes in this morning, so if you'll give me just a second.
Take it off, we had it on the 20th.
Had it on the 20th, that's correct.
Reset that.
at those interviews?" I said, "Well, that's our, that's our desire, but if you can't make it, you can't make it," but that's when we were talking about the 20th, so hopefully, this change to the, to the 12th may expedite that. But, yeah, he was very concerned, he said, "Man, the sooner we can get somebody on board, you know, the better off we're gonna be, and have the wider transition, period, for him to, to train," so... I did not get yours, I guess it's still loading, did you get yours?
Mine just showed up, copy just showed up, it must be coming your way.
All right, I'll keep an eye on it.
It's a long ways to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does, that's for sure. So, those were the two items that I had to bring before the commission this morning. Anything else, gentlemen, on the Commissioner's report? Not moved on, I don't have anything on upper arc.
Meeting's still on that, I'll have to look again, but it's also the 21st, and I'll send a new reminder a week before, to everybody.
Attorney Items? Only Jackie, I've prepared a draft of a, some language for the zoning resolution regarding cease and desist orders, to firm that up a little bit, she sent it to me, it was pretty good, but I haven't had a chance to study it, so we'll look at it, and we'll discuss it at a future meeting. Okay, good. Speaking of that, I know Jackie had asked to be on the agenda for a staff report down in Wetmore. I wonder, gentlemen, if you would entertain the idea of just putting her on the regular staff report schedule on the first Tuesday or Wednesday of the month?
No reason why not.
I think we need to kind of keep updated on what's going on, and how many permits have been pulled, and so on and so forth, so let me just look real quick, do you guys have a preference of which day, Tuesday or Wednesday, or?
No.
I'm gonna see if I have the numbers.
Make it a less light day.
Yeah, we've got four staff reports on Tuesday, typically, and five on Wednesday, I think.
Six today.
Yeah. So, I would move that we include planning and zoning staff reports on the first Tuesday of the month.
Second.
The movement's seconded to include planning and zoning on our staff report list on the first Tuesday of the month, discussion? And I'm okay with her having that staff report on the agenda for the Wetmore meeting, it's already on, so, and then next month, we'll start.
We'd like her to prepare and submit like everybody else, this is summary of what's going on.
Yeah, I'll shoot her an email about that.
That'd be great.
Okay, further discussion, hearing them will proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion carries. I will convey that to her. Anything else, Council?
No.
All right, is that, thank you, sir. I wonder, anything from Administrative Assistant today?
You mean?
Yeah, reference.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public comment, if you guys, sorry, if you folks have anything that you'd like to talk to the Commissioners about that's not on the agenda today, we'd be more than happy to hear any public comment, we're good.
I have one.
Go ahead, Mr. Ron.
I don't know if it's a good place to bring it up, but has anybody received any letters from a company called TeleCircuit through CenturyLink? I received one the other day.
Through CenturyLink, you say?
Well, they're saying that they're hooked up with CenturyLink.
Okay, gotcha.
But they're saying, "Our, our landline, we're hooked up, but we don't pay no long-distance phone call," and this TeleCircuit letter came in, and I don't know how they received it, they got our, they have my name, of course, it's in my wife's name, the telephone, but they're saying that now, they're, they're charging us for long-distance phone calls.
And CenturyLink is your phone provider?
Yes, and I talked to CenturyLink and said, "Well, there's no third party here, so we handle everything."
Right.
So, I was just wondering if, if they have a place to bring it up, or just take that one, Sheriff Barley?
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing it up, because, number one, we're live-streamed, so if other people are getting that same communication, it's a good opportunity for us to say, "Hey, you know, be aware of this," I'm not necessarily saying it's a scam, but if CenturyLink says they don't have any third-party vendors, then it sounds like...
Were they asking you to pay something?
Well, it's, it's a bill.
Oh, really?
And for some reason, they show my name, they show the landline number, and they're showing the calls that I made, and those calls that I made are legit.
Right, but you haven't been charged for long distance, up until now.
CenturyLink is not charging me, but this office is charging me for those long-distance phone calls.
Commissioner Candor's kind of been involved with CenturyLink through the broadband project, if you would, I'm just suggesting if you would...
Yeah, let me have the copy of that, and I'll send it to the director.
I'll make a copy of that letter, I didn't bring it with me, but I thought I'd bring it up and see if anybody else has heard of it.
I'll send it to them, and they can do what they, they may put a notice out to every, all their customers, they ought, all customers ought to be aware of it, and ignore them.
I kind of looked in the, through the computer and Google, and even AT&amp;T is getting hit through that same office.
Yeah.
And then, there's a customer service number on that letter, you dial that number, there's no phone servicing.
So, if they send out 6,000 of those letters, and they get 100 of them back, they've made money.
I'll send it to the CenturyLink director that covers all Colorado, and he can decide what they should put out, I think they ought to put out a notice, tell everybody.
Well, yes, you know, I'm not paying for it, but...
Yeah, right, well, good point, I'm glad you brought that up.
And one, and a very fine print is, if you don't pay, they're gonna cut your long-distance phone call.
Grab them dry.
If you were CenturyLink, I can't imagine them cutting your long-distance phone call. Yeah, and you know what, if you, more than I wouldn't, I would recommend dropping a copy of that by the sheriff's office, and, "Hey, just wanna make you aware."
I was gonna call that NBC, schemers, scammers, and liars, too, you know?
That is NBC.
Yeah, I'm sure I'm not the only one that's receiving it.
They'll just add it to their repertoire.
We just got a mailer, the county received a mailer on another business, that's actually a third-party that doesn't have anything to do with what they were trying to represent, they'd scheduled a meeting here, in the county, on the 19th and 20th at a restaurant, we talked to the restaurant people, and said, "We haven't scheduled anything with anybody," so...
A lot of people out there.
As Sheriff Barley mentioned, he said, "You can expect a lot of scams right before the tax season, when people are gonna get some windfall tax returns, everybody's wanting a chunk of that money," so...
How do they get a hold of your number anyway, to begin with? And then, are they, are they, are they listening to your phone calls? Because it shows the phone calls I made, and those are your phone calls.
Well, you got, that's a public number, and a lot of people are in business to sell those numbers, so...
Yeah, I got a notice the other day from an insurance company that we deal with, and down at the bottom, it just said, "Oh, and here, we may share your information, including your name, address, phone number, and social security number."
What?
Yep. My wife called, and you know what, give them the business, but, so, didn't say they're going to, but it said they may, and, so I don't think anybody's information is as nearly as secret and secure as we think it is.
It isn't, no.
Well, thank you, sir, anything else, quote, comment this morning? Okay, we'll move on, staff reports, report though.
Hey, we're only five minutes behind, so you boys better keep it tight.
You know what, I never shake your hand.
But you've been to China.
Long morning, what year were you there, Bob?
We were in the morning.
He's been there twice.
Yeah, I expected you guys to be wearing masks this morning, but maybe they're sold out. Good morning, sir, how are you?
Pretty nice, isn't it? Yeah, joints don't look so good.
Joints don't look so good. You can adjust that microphone to your comfort level? No, not like that, sir.
Then you have to push the button, yeah, you did, it is on, all right, you keep it down out of your eyes, just tucked.
Well, we don't have a whole lot this month.
I can hear your voice back there.
In January, we sold 155 gallons of fuel, and our current inventory is 1448. So far this month, we sold one-tenth of a gallon.
Nice.
That was to Bob once.
Yeah, for 46 cents.
I needed a lot more gas.
No, it was the, the test, the dispenser had quit working, because cell phones went down, and I went out to, to check on it, after doing some other stuff. We attended the Colorado Airport Operators Association meeting on the 27th, and found out that we did get our AWAS grant. We still need to get some paperwork from Division of Aviation, and it should be coming shortly. Juve sent me the other day a schedule for the installation of an AWAS, and it looks like it's only gonna take them 30 days to get it done.
Month of July, is that what's planned?
When the ground falls, anyway, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it depends on the paperwork getting here from Department of Aviation, and when it's processed, that type stuff.
Is that a matching grant, do we have to come up with?
We gotta come up with some, and it was in our budget for this year.
Your budget, how much was the grant?
222,000, I believe.
Yep.
And it's 10% match.
Excellent, wow.
That's a big deal, too.
Yes.
That we're the second, there are two airports left in the state that were municipal airports, and we were one of them, now there's only one left.
And I also talked to Division of Aviation, and they're moving our runway maintenance from 2022 to 2021.
Right there.
So...
That's another big deal, because that's another $100,000.
Yeah, but, you know, we can, we can probably do a lot of in-kind, because we got a lot of crack material, so, you know, we should be able to do some in-kind to reduce our match.
Are you gonna paint that runway then, or is it gonna be redone a little bit this year? Some of the numbers are pretty weak out there.
Yeah, they're pretty weak, but, you know, it's gotta be a special paint, we don't, I don't think we can go to Ace Hardware and buy paint. Anyway, this year, we're planning on a lot of tender, loving care to the airport that needs to be done, has needed to be done for some time. We got a segment and circle that the segments are in dire need of paint, so I'm gonna try to get some volunteers to help, go out and try to get those things taken apart and painted and put back together again. Weed control out, on the segment and circle, we need to do, and if we get on it early in the spring, we ought to be in pretty good shape. The plow truck, we need to get the, the plow itself leaks down, and we need to probably, it's gonna be springtime before we can get it into Roden Bridge, to see if they can get something done with the hydraulic system on that. We had the hydraulic hoses replaced last year, but apparently, it's not, those hoses leaking yet.
Seal bypass valve?
Yeah, probably.
Have you talked to Roden Bridge about?
I did, a couple weeks ago.
And we need to get the tractor maintained, and I don't know if we...
Same deal on the tractor, talk to Gary about it.
You did talk to him?
Yeah, all they need to do, and I forget, you got charged a bunch when you had Four Rivers come up, it was, the county'll do it.
Yeah, it's pretty expensive to get it...
Replace the filters and...
What Gary say?
Said, "No problems, bring it in."
Yeah, well, they're probably gonna have to come and get it.
Need to do it, well, yeah, they, they, you just need to coordinate it with him.
Yeah, I can't see us driving that truck all the way to...
If I saw a tractor look just like yours out there on the highway, I thought it was you coming back from...
Wasn't maybe. Yeah, and we got some, some needed maintenance that we need to do on the fuel system, some filters need to be changed, and so on and so forth, and we'll get those done, that's not coming up until, gotta worry, I believe, oh, March, March.
Do it sooner than later, they're not as busy on, they're maintaining other things, too.
Yeah, and we got the, the two hangars that are currently under construction are just about complete autos, about the only thing he's got left to do, he's already got his gas put in and everything, so he's got his apron left to go, and Mr. Legree's got hangar door issues, so...
You do?
Yes. And 2020, I guess this coming year, we got, T-hangers gonna get started, gonna be building five T-hangers out there, and Mr. Lavenu is planning on getting his hangar started on, I think it's lot three, 80 by 80. So, that's what's going on at the airport.
The T-hanger's going to be, the T-hanger's gonna be metal clad?
Yes, yes, it'll look just like the rest of the hangars.
Gary told me, when you do that, and you guys have talked to him, there's plenty of dirt to fill in, where the other three could go, so that's...
We got plenty of dirt.
He said he'd get on that whenever they get out there to do it.
Go ahead, sir.
Heard anything more about the pavement where the fire truck bashed it in, is it still, needs to be repaired?
No, we got, we got some paperwork filled out, and I saw something the other day from Donna, they're wanting some pictures, I took some pictures yesterday, or the day before yesterday.
Is it the insurance company?
Yeah, yeah, they wanted some pictures, so I took them on the cell phone, and the wind was blowing about 90 miles an hour at the time, so I don't know how it came out, but I'm gonna stop in and visit with her for a few minutes after this meeting.
Is the fire department planning on paying for any of that, or is it just gonna be an insurance claim?
Going through their insurance, Jay, they're turning it over to them.
It's all the same insurance company up there, and anyway, that's it.
All righty, all right, sir, thank you, any other questions? Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Except I wanna know where Lynn buys his Levi's. Day like this, I could use a pair of those.
I'd go and shop.
Really?
Thanks, Bob, see ya.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Office of Emergency Management, Ms. Meredith, good morning.
Good morning, good morning. Thanks for seeing us. We're just going very out of order.
I see you came in today.
You did the tip. Yes, good morning.
How are you doing?
Good.
Good.
Um, a few things to highlight out of the report would be a...
Just a second here, and we'll...
You're not on the...
Assuming we have that report, I do not.
I got it.
I got it, should be in there.
Meredith's on, on the stick.
It would be nice if I was on the right agenda. See you guys, thank you.
See you later, Bob.
Yeah, I was on yesterday's, sorry, I was looking something up, so...
So, we're gonna go ahead and with the purchase of the corner vehicle, the Homeland Security Grant, and we're gonna meet with our...
What are you wanting me to do?
Melissa and Vernon, and get that squared away, and then, so that'll begin to get all done. Hopefully, we can get that purchase through that same line.
I'll think about it.
Okay, get that done, and we, I submitted the Hazard Mitigation Planning Grant.
Before you go on, can we back up a little on the vehicle?
Sure.
Where's it coming from, you know?
Coming from...
Who we buying the vehicle from?
The RFP that we, or the, kind of the...
Bid.
Bid that we went in with the grant, I think it was Ford dealership, but I just wanted, I were meeting before we even start that, because I wasn't part of the person who went in with the grant, so I wanna make sure I have that all squared away before I...
And in our match, you had that in your budget, correct? Okay, good.
It's absolutely good, and, yeah, so the Hazard Mitigation Plan, Planning Grant, I worked with Towne of West Cliff and Towne of West Cliff to get the, their letters of intent signed and all of that, and so, we'll go forward with that, and all that work's gonna be done in 2021, so it's just the grant for that. Had a good CES meeting on the 21st of January, um, yeah, that's kind of the main things to highlight, if there's any other questions.
And you sent your paperwork in for your training.
Yep, so that's all good.
Good, okay.
There is a new part of our ENPG grant, is that our timesheet has to be signed each month, from us and our supervisors, and so, if you could sign my timesheet. And so, um, if you could sign my timesheet.
Okay.
And that's gonna be a new add-on for each report now.
Okay. Um, can you include this with your
Yeah, yeah, I, I was just notified of it beforehand.
Okay, just give a second, we'll review that. I don't know, we're cutting in and out a little, but
Gotta keep your mouth closer.
Well, she was doing a great job, you know, on student
Yeah, it didn't sound it like it did, no.
I'm just trying to see, yeah, I can hear me, see how?
Yeah.
They sounded good when they were
Working.
Um, and so this is for the month of January, correct?
Yeah. And then
When's it have to be turned in so we don't miss it?
It just has to be each month and then um each, each quarter, each month has to be signed and then I send it in at the end of each quarter.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, so we're not holding anything up?
No.
So I would move we uh authorize the timesheets for Meredith, for OEM. Second, it's been moved to second to authorize signing the timesheets. Discussion, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay.
She's gonna take a vote every time we approve her time sheet?
Uh, I look at it kind of the same way as we do VSO. It's a document being sent in and we're signing it. I can sign them if we want, but same with VSO, I mean, we do that every month, so I don't know.
I'd rather look at it, I think it's fine, let's, let's do it.
The hours you put into that? Yeah, so it's, since I am, everything that I do within emergency management is the ENPG grant, so I'll go first for that, yeah.
Yeah, that's all tied to the ENPG grant.
Correct, yeah. Um,
Fair enough.
Yeah, and then a project that we've been working on for the South Region as, was that Fremont, Custer, Pueblo, Los Angeles and Warfino County? Is a MOU between all of our offices of emergency management. And so that whenever, so that for example, the spring fire, um, we had Pueblo there, um, Custer, Fremont, all of us added in. And so, um, we wanna kind of put more in writing of what we're gonna allow and timeline and all of that. And so, um, if you, you guys are okay with it and have Clint look over the MOU and have his edits. Um, and then I can bring that back to the um, the committee and then have a final MOU to bring to you guys to sign.
What's the purpose of this?
So, so for Yeah, so in, in an emergency situation, uh, we would go, um, I believe it's thirty-six hours uh for mutual aid. Um, and then that also now includes EOC personnel and equipment and so, um
So we do that before?
Right, we've done it before, it's just in, no, it's just in writing now.
It's kinda formalized.
Yeah.
Appears.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, here is two different versions. One is Pueblo's edits and then Fremont County's edits from Pueblo's edits.
So the document came from Fremont or Pueblo?
Yeah, so we as a committee wrote it up, Pueblo looked at it first, had their edits and then now we're sending that out to
Have you edited your edits too, yeah?
Um, I, I had our edits from the beginning, um
You were good with it?
I am good with it, yeah.
So what's the final version or?
So Fremont, Fremont's would be the final version as of now, but there's not
Did they include?
Final draft, I guess.
Did they include Pueblo's edits?
Yes, so
So just giving that
They took Pueblo's document and added
And added some things and so
And you and, and you had your input on Pueblo's original?
Correct.
Is there a name of that group?
The South Region
Oh, that's part of the South Region, okay.
Yep, um, and then, um, I wanna kind of put something on you guys, y'all's radar. Um, so I know starting out with the position, um, very certain about the no overtime and no comp time. Um, which is fine, I've agreed to that. Um, so I was wondering if I could switch my hours to four-ten's as part of the um kind of give and take of that a little bit. Um, so I would still be on twenty-four seven, uh, on call if something happens. If something does happen on a Friday, I would still come in. Um, it's just something that I could um manage my time a little bit better maybe, um
If you got a call on Friday, that's, you still get them.
Oh, yeah, exactly. So even on a Sunday, I get a call, I still come in, so it just doesn't
Sure.
Uh, and you're thinking Monday through Thursday then?
Yeah.
And your hours would be, have you thought about that, seventy-five?
Yeah, that's kind of, seventy-five would be fine with me. Um, just wanted to kind of leave that one up to you guys. Um, I would still, anytime I have a meeting, it's, it's beforehand, um, it's scheduled with whoever it is. Um, there's no, again, like if anything does pop on a Friday, I would still
Say if you had a meeting come up on Friday?
Exactly.
You would still attend it?
Yeah.
So just a quick thought, let's say you had your forty hours in on Thursday. You probably know this ahead of time, but let's say an opportunity come up to attend a meeting and you'd already had your forty hours in. And you would just probably attend that meeting and then do
Readjust, yeah.
The following week.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Prince, you got a comment or a question?
I'm a little concerned that it's not in our policy, employee policy to do this. And if we do it, always setting a precedent that other employees could come and say, look, um, with whatever organization, if I'd like to do the same type of thing, I have some concerns. It's not that I don't wanna accommodate you, but I do have concerns for the entire organization doing something like this.
The treasurer's office.
Yeah, we do have one office on a four-day week now. Uh, they're open five days a week, but their employees are on a four-day week, so I don't know.
That's the treasurer, right?
But they got somebody to cover.
That's an elected official, that's their own decision. I'm talking about people who report to us.
Right. Yeah.
So I don't know, just
Do you need an answer?
No, I just wanted to put that as a question and maybe next month at the staff report, I can
You do four-ten's too? Was that authorized?
Well, we're all on thirty-two hours a week, so
So that's a difference.
Public health, including Alyssa, is thirty-two hour week, they're not on forty-hour week. So they really work four days a week.
Yes, that's a difference.
That's a different deal.
Yeah, that's right, okay, I'm gonna see her.
Okay, I think we uh
So, yeah, we can talk about it next month, staff report.
Okay. Yeah, let's, let's digest that a little bit, do a little research, uh, speak with council and um You know, I wanna I wanna honor our employees across the county as much as we can with whatever that happens to be. But uh, I understand Commissioner Prince's question or concern about it as well, so
Well, I worry about you anyway, Meredith, because a seven-to-five hour day is a tough day and, 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 you know, it's
Yeah.
I know you're awake at seven and I know you go, you know
I mean, that's, in all honesty, that's the hours I work already.
Right, I know.
And you're forty-hour week, right? You're full-time?
Yeah. I usually work a little bit more than that, but
Okay.
How are you guys do that?
Yeah, oh, no, I wasn't a complaint, I'm just saying that, those are, usually hours I work anyways. Um, so upcoming, there's the, I'm going to the PIO training in Pueblo in March, which will be good.
Okay, can we stop right there?
Sure.
Cause that was one of my things this morning, PIO.
Public Information Officer.
Just cannot let this keep fading.
Correct.
Uh, I certainly have not made the time to pursue that with this commission or really with anybody else. But I think we, we're gonna get caught one of these days. And we're all gonna look like a bunch of rum dums if we don't get something lined up.
Yeah.
Uh, we see it on the news every day, state and national. Doesn't have to be just the national news. We have to have a spokesperson for this county, so uh, you're going to a training. Am I to assume then that you're not getting trained as the PIO?
No, so this was, um, this is basic information, like basic training within that, just to know in general.
Okay.
Um, because when, even if there's not a major incident, questions still get fielded to emergency management. Um, and so even some search and rescue calls, I'll field that information. And so just knowing that base information, but that is, will not make me the PIO.
Right, okay, so that's, was one of my questions. The other was, could, could we ask you to keep a fire lit under the PIO topic?
Sure, definitely, that won't be hard.
Gets lost on my calendar, I tell you that. But I think about it randomly, I think someday we're gonna have a huge event.
Yeah.
And then we're not gonna have a spokesperson.
For example, Warfino County didn't, didn't have a PIO um in the beginning of the spring fire.
Right.
So now they have a position.
So what is, is it somebody that's there that doubles in or is it a part-time guy that comes in or is there?
It just
That's what we need now?
Yeah, it just, it just depends on um however you, the county wants to set it up. Um, part-time, but then also um on-call for whenever it does happen. Uh, because incidents always pop at the worst times. Um, and then another option, I looked at different grants, um, or funding options around. Um, and my, the answer that I've gotten was that um, there's not a set grant that is for a PIO. However, um, if that position would be under emergency management, the ENPG grant will refund, I think we get thirty, thirty-six, thirty-eight percent back. And so part of that salary would be refunded, just like mine is.
Right, which I think we'd be crazy not to approach that.
Try to do it that
Or at least look into that, to try to say, let's, let's run it under your uh
So that would, that would be my um suggestion within that.
Okay. Go ahead. No, oh, okay. I was just gonna dovetail on PIO. So I'm just asking here, cause I really would like to get some traction behind this.
Yeah.
Do you, I guess I'm asking this to all of us. Could it be a part-time position of a current employee? Are we gonna have to hire another employee, either part-time or full-time? Can we increase a full-time employee's salary now to include that? Do you think it would be overwhelming?
I think
Those are the questions I have.
For me, it depends on what that position is doing beforehand for already.
You have to take them online for full-time, two, three weeks at a time or whatever it is.
Right.
Yeah, um, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I've got
And also PIOs can um do all, the press releases, it's not just for emergency situations. Um, it can also do the press releases for the board or for whatever is going on within the county.
At point of contact.
Right.
Coordinate them.
Right.
Whatever they
Whatever that would be, so um, if there's like rumors going around on Facebook, handling that of different projects that the county is doing, so
Yeah, would, I, I ask Alyssa, just as an example here, with your recent press release, would that go through a PIO typically if we had one? Or would you do that as out of your office anyway?
Probably would. That particular press relief was, would probably go out of my office anyways, but it's, if we had a more organized system, then it definitely could go through a PIO.
It would be great actually to have a person that is professional, can, can write things using your input and it's a, and it's representing that for the county. I mean, that's what others do.
I like the idea of having one person
Yeah.
Where it filters all to that one person, that one person, that is responsible for
And they go to each office to get a, whatever the new, whatever need to get out.
Yeah, cause I'd hate for the different offices to make announcements and things.
And they do it different styles and different
Yeah.
I mean, as example, I had two phone calls wanting to do an on-camera interview with news stations about our escapees. Me personally, I said, it's not happening.
Yeah.
I don't have that information, I'm not qualified to speak to
PIO could have done.
Uh, had we had a PIO online, obviously that would
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, you had to come
Well, I think that it's important to have depth in that, in that position as well, because we can't, I mean, just for instance, we can't just have Meredith be the PIO.
Right.
Because she's gonna be out, I can't just be the PIO because I'm gonna be out doing stuff there. But Cindy and I are both going to that same training. So I think if we could get, you know, three or four of us, I think it should always still be one person that stuff goes through, but if we had
But a little subcommittee driving us to that.
Redundancies, yeah.
Go ahead, go, you're fine.
I, I would almost be inclined to see what department could really use a part-time helping person. We hire a new individual who is PIO and
Slash them down.
Assisted to whatever else we need.
Yeah.
So, and then the, the position where they're slashed, they could do the PIO if there's a major incident, we take them away from that, so it wouldn't be
In effect, it could be a full-time position, but
That's what I'm looking at, half
And half, or whatever part-time is the base
As an assistant to whomever needs something.
Recognizing some days to get busier than others.
We could ask our administrative assistant to serve as a PIO, sorry.
Yeah.
Y'all, I got, I got a release today.
Still in four days a week, that would become six days a week. Going the other direction.
Be a no.
Respectfully decline, right?
Respectfully decline.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and I think to Commissioner Candace's point, eventually that PIO is gonna stand in front of some television cameras. There's, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
And then also within that though, is um, the PIO is a lot of times, sometimes that person will do the on-air interviews and stuff like that. But if it's an incident, um, giving talking points to the elected officials. So that, whoever that is, is prepared for that conversation. Um, so it's, it's a balancing act in that. In some situations, yes, PIO, in other situations, it's good to have that elected official.
Right.
Yeah.
But we need that structure.
Definitely, definitely.
We can't just be shooting from the hip about something we heard a little bit about, which is where I would have been had I agreed, so. Um, okay, well, yeah, and you had something else, Commissioner Prince, go ahead.
Are we done with PIO?
I believe we are.
I'll bring it up every
Can we dismiss him now? You got something for her?
I was gonna ask a question about your intern program at the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, when, do they come to see you?
Yeah, so um, I had my first meeting in January and she, it was after school, she came to the office and we, I had her do the ICS one hundred, seven hundred, the FEMA certifications, we talked through that. And um, then we also talked about um, in general, what she wants to do and the different directions that she could take and um, what college programs and stuff like that.
Very cool, I'll congratulate you for that.
And then she, she's gonna be at a psych first aid training in February, um, I think in two weeks or something, so she'll do that, so
And the school picks the person and
Yes, well, she had interest, so I went to that career day and then she had interest in emergency management. And then we set up that mentorship program through that, so
That's through the high school?
Yeah, through that.
And then you mentioned a master student?
Yeah, um, he was doing a project over um different rural, or different emergency management programs and he wanted to see the difference in rural versus front range. And then what challenges we have as a rural frontier community versus high resource, high, you know, capacity that is the front range, so. Um, so that was really good.
Good.
Yeah.
Um, where's your, where's your SEMA conference at?
It is in Loveland.
Oh?
Yeah.
Anything you need, we're not providing to you that could help you do your job better.
Well, no, I'm just kidding, yeah.
Besides four days?
There you go. No, so far, so good. Yeah.
Let's get back to this, you satisfied with this version?
I am, yeah. I think the only thing Fremont changed was requesting party and um
Assistant party.
Assistant party, yeah.
I mean, it looks fine to me.
Yeah, okay.
Good, thank you, sir.
All right.
All right, ma'am, thank you very much. Yes, go ahead, sorry.
The, our ID cards.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of
Expiring ones. What's that?
And new employees.
Oh, yeah. So I will
I can't remember if you're doing them or, yeah.
Well, Alex was doing it when, when he was with me. And so, um, what, I'll send you the Excel sheet and just has the basic information that we need. And then um, I also need a picture from shoulders up on a white background.
Okay, that's the part Brenda used to do.
Yeah.
So
Yeah.
That's something I can just do and just
And just send, and just email me. It just, yeah, you know, and you can just email me them and then we can
So you can take a picture with cell phone and email it.
Yeah, that's what she used.
Yeah, shoulders up, white background.
Okay.
Uh, you said when Alex was with you, he's no longer?
Correct.
Looks good to me. Didn't know that. Why did printout copies have time on the deck? Don't know, copies spread's going on.
Well, because he's with, he's doing IT GIs.
The IT?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll visit with Burn about that later.
Well.
It's okay, go ahead, you're fine, not gonna crucify anybody with me, I just didn't know that, I thought he was still half-time U and half-time IT.
Well, within the budget, so we had that conversation after I submitted the twenty-twenty budget, and I just didn't have you guys amend that, and so it was, so within my budget, I just didn't have that, so.
You didn't have salary for the half-time position?
Yeah.
Is, he's still half-time with Burn or being?
Don't know that.
Well, that's why I said, well, conversation with Burn about that, okay, so he is not spending any time at OEM?
He does like some, like alert and warning stuff, but that's more of like the GIS.
Yeah, he's doing, that's what I thought, man, so what he was gonna do with you.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, very good, anything else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, appreciate you with that, Emily.
You're welcome.
Have a good day.
We'll get a bill for it, I can guarantee you. I'm not.
Two hundred fifty an hour now. It took me three hours.
I'll pay you in coffee, we'll be nice.
Yeah, Mr. Prince, before we go on, go ahead.
I just wanna mention to Ashley, what we're doing, if you didn't catch on already, these are all the departments that report to the commissioners, and once a month, it's a two-day process, they come and tell us what they're up to, what's going on, so that if they have issues, we could help them resolve their issues, we know what's going on. I just wanted to give you what is happening, just in case you were going, what's going on here? I want to give you updates.
Yeah, that's a great point, and I cut Meredith off, yeah, Meredith was getting ready to define it, and I interrupted her, and I apologize for that. PIO is acronym for, excuse me, a public information officer. So if we have a, a public information officer, that is the clearinghouse for information to go out to the community, out to the state, to the feds, whatever, so that we don't have six people giving their own slant on, let's say, for example, the escapees recently from our jail, that we have one person that is taking all that information in and then disseminating it back out, instead of five or six people giving different versions, that's really what it's about. Comes into play, obviously during critical events, fires, floods, major accidents, you know, things like that. But they can also do a more mundane day-to-day, or week-to-week, press releases, public announcements, that kind of thing, so. We get caught up in the acronym world too, and we try not to do that, but.
I tried to define it.
I know you didn't, I, I'm sorry, I knew, we knew what that was, but didn't think about the audience, so.
A lot of government agencies and commercial companies have professional spokesmen that are, you know, public information officers for that company, or that agency, or whatever, you'll see them on TV all the time.
Okay, all right, good, public health? Good morning.
Morning.
You're looking southwesty today.
Good morning.
Thanks, I got this for my birthday.
Oh.
How is your health? You haven't been to China today, have you?
I have not been to China today, or anytime recently.
But I heard something's coming out of. He's been to your vacation resort place, hello.
I went there alone, and it wasn't much fun being there alone, but I had a lot of fun at the roads and the rainforest.
That's weird too, yeah, it was amazing, and nothing's coming out of there?
No viral.
Besides me.
We'll take you as a virus any day.
All right. So a few things I want to bring your attention to is, first of all, our, our health fair is April fourth, and I don't think we've heard from anyone.
Oh, you have.
Yes, you have.
Today, but you have.
Okay.
Yesterday.
Oh, good, okay, okay, good, thank you.
I will too.
I responded today.
Okay, good, thank you.
Is it from her?
No, it's from her office.
Yeah, it's from Rhonda Prudential.
I signed up yesterday.
Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you for that, we are kind of behind on our volunteer sign-ups, so hopefully we get more soon.
Can I ask you a question related to that, before we get into some other stuff? So I see in the newspaper that, and I tried to commit it to memory, big article about someone else doing health screenings.
I saw that too.
For a hundred and seventy-five bucks or something, seems to me a duplication of services.
It is, it is, and that's fine.
Then you could pay nineteen ninety-five a month, so is that a local group, do you know?
It's not, I don't know, I don't, I'm not sure what that really is about.
I just wanted to ask you about.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need to ask.
Yeah, I don't, I read that article too, and I mean, it's, it's fine, if you wanna not go to the health fair and do that, as long as people are being aware of their health, honestly.
Yeah, certainly a lot more money.
It's quite a bit more money.
I don't know what the average.
And I don't know like what the turnaround is, like to get their results from that, health fair results usually come in about a week, two weeks tops. And yeah, you can get all of those services for a little more than half of what that, so.
Thank you.
Um, let's talk about Cindy for a second, she has been to all kinds of good stuff lately, she is now CPR certified, CPR, not CPR certified, but to be an instructor of CPR, which is gonna be awesome for me, then I, that'll free me up another day of the week, of the month. She also is a rapid tag user, so she can do, make those a rapid tag thing, so that's awesome, that'll also help Meredith out, and.
Do you think it's appropriate if employees, at least within the courthouse, can come and get their picture taken, and maybe start with, I hate to put this on Kelly, but start with Kara, maybe just getting a headshot, to get the photo thing taken care of, and then I don't know what would happen after that.
Absolutely, and then actually, you could just send it to either Cindy or Meredith, and then I think between Cindy and Meredith, they could figure out a timer, however that works best for them, but yeah, definitely. Let's see, what else, Cindy and I both attended a tabletop exercise that Meredith actually orchestrated. It was in Canyon City a couple of weeks ago, and it was fantastic, it was about communications, and how we're gonna get the word out appropriately to not only our community, but people outside the community if that's needed, so, it was really good. That, that being said, I'll mention again that Cindy and I are gonna go to that PIO training as well in March. In, in Pueblo, there's a whole list of things to be like a, I don't know if it's even a certified PIO, or, or, you know, like a delegated PIO person. Meredith has most of those things already done, Cindy and I have about half of those things already done.
Is that expensive, what, what's it cost?
Um, this doesn't cost us anything.
I was just wondering how they sponsor it.
A lot of it is FEMA training, so it doesn't cost anything, and then a lot of it is put on by other communities. There was one like in Grant County a couple of months ago, so it really is just a collaborative effort for emergency preparedness people, so, yeah.
What's the purpose that you want Cindy to go to that, just out of curiosity?
Well, two, two reasons, first of all, Cindy does a lot of emergency preparedness, she, she is our emergency preparedness coordinator now. And so if there was, let's say coronavirus breakout in Custer County.
What's your top?
Not probably. Then it, it would be our responsibility, Meredith mentioned that not, not always does the PIO the person in front of the camera, but it would be our responsibility to get the bullet points for you guys to speak in front of, of a camera, so. So from a public health perspective, if it was any, any kind of a public health emergency. And then the, the second piece of that is that we're trying in our office to help Meredith build depth in her position. So that's why Cindy and I went to the tabletop exercise, Cindy and I are also going to the emergency management conference, there's an ESF eight track in that, which ESF eight is emergency support function of hospitals and healthcare. And since we don't have hospital in this county, public health is ESF eight for Custer County. And so we're gonna go to that track and, and do some of that, there's also some other things that are very applicable to us at that conference. So we're doing that, and we got to go on a scholarship, we got a scholarship, so it's only costing us our fuel and, well, I think our fuel, just.
So that covers lodging?
Lodging and meals, actually, is part of our scholarship, so, yeah, so that's really nice. Um, so that being said, that's, we're trying to do that just to kind of help build depth in Meredith's position as well, and because Cindy and I are both kind of in that emergency-minded, that's kind of how we roll, it's working out pretty good, so.
Do you know what ESF five is, I could look it up here, but I saw it on Meredith's report, I forgot to ask her.
I, it's like, that's like the Department of Homeland Security stuff, like, home, it's, if I remember right, like, because Christie Coleman runs that ESF eight, or I mean, sorry, ESF five meeting, so it's, it's emergency preparedness management stuff, yeah.
I see you have a bullet point that Carmelene did a vaping thing. In an effort to at least try to support, show some interest and understand what's going on, I'd like to ask if you know, some of these things are coming up locally, if you would let me or us know, I would be interested in just going over and setting in on some of that, so we have an idea of what our employees are doing.
Okay, absolutely.
And I think it brings value to them and what the job that they're doing.
Yeah, definitely.
I would have definitely gone to that.
Okay, Carmelene and I actually did that together, but I wanted to give her credit for it. And it was just for the scene, for the science class, so, I mean, and you would have been welcome to come and sit in on it, John Tilletson did.
Just gotta know about it.
Yeah, so we will be more, we'll, we'll be more forthcoming about what we're doing, there's gonna be another vaping presentation that we're gonna do at like a family night for the whole school, so we'll definitely let you know when that is too.
Yeah, I think if, if part of the county's involved, at least I think we should know and have the opportunity to be supportive in that role, so.
Definitely.
Yeah, that Narcan training would have been interesting as well.
So I do Narcan training for every single CPR class that I do, I could do a Narcan training for you guys right here, right now, if you want me to.
No, good.
I mean, it's, takes five minutes.
Can we shoot something up your nose, or our noses?
No.
No hands on?
You could, but it wouldn't do you any good, unless you're high on opioids, which, that would be a side-long conversation.
Let's move on.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, we'll, we'll let you know, in fact, I'll have, Rhonda does a really good calendar for us of like everything that we're doing, so I'll have her just report back to you guys as well, yeah, absolutely, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, and then I attended a couple of those kids' council, I can't even tell you what the group was down in Canyon City, and then just got.
About.
Tracy's still going, but.
Yeah, about childcare, yeah, that's a huge issue for us, as you know, we have only two licensed daycare providers in Custer County right now. There's over ten kids on each waiting list for them, I did talk to a gal this, just yesterday, actually, who is very interested in opening another certified childcare center, and possibly even integrating some preschool classes into that, which would be sweet, yeah. And this particular person would be fantastic at it, I think, so.
I'm gonna shoot you a note, I'm gonna bring this up publicly, but. Towards that end, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Something you may get to talk to, but.
Perfect. So we're, we're on the, on the ball with that.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay, let me talk about Pat, so we hired Patrick Fiori to be our substance abuse coordinator, he'll be a thirty-two hour a week position, with benefits completely funded by the HERSA grant, yes. So starting right now, he'll be, he's thirty-two hours a week, and it'll be sort of, kind of like what you were talking about with Meredith, some weeks he'll work probably ten hours, and some weeks he'll work forty-five hours, and it's just gonna, and it'll wash out. He is, so part of that's being funded by the HERSA grant, another part is being funded by a grant that Fremont and Custer County's got for opioid abuse and stuff, and then also the school has gotten a grant for, through the Office of Behavioral Health, to do a position for them that has, that will be like, not only substance abuse, but some bullying and stuff like that. So he'll be in on that, and kind of helping administrate that, so, super excited, he just started on Monday.
So he operating out of your office?
He is, and from home, mostly, yeah, because I mean, it's, he's gonna be out in the community mostly, and in Salida and Fremont County, so he, he's gonna be enough out of the office that he doesn't really even, I mean, he's based with us, but not necessarily. He is a county employee, just so that we can get his benefits, that, that's gonna be the easiest, cleanest way to get his benefit package, but it'll just be a pass through, essentially, we invoice the grant for, for all of the money that we spend from the county, and will be reimbursed.
So the name of that grant again?
It's a HERSA grant, I'm not sure there's an actual name for that one, the other one is the Office of Behavioral Health block grant.
Okay, and then I have a question for you, when it's appropriate.
Okay, that's all I have to say about that for now.
So I always love getting your Ford report. Do you have it?
Yes, sir.
Bullet number two under the immunization program, I want to sign up right now, because I think I have shingits.
You mean shingles?
Do you have shingles?
I think I have shingits.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering.
Bullet point number two under immunization.
I've been worried about that, Tom.
I'm sorry, there's a R missing out of there.
I have demonstrated certain symptoms, so can we, can I say?
I feel like that might be another offline conversation for you to have.
I'm almost guaranteeing that would be all about shingits right now.
He's been to China too.
This is what it looks like when you get shingits, right? I knew that's what you meant, but I had to pay it on you.
All right, thank you for bringing that to my attention, I will.
I thought that was, I thought that's what you were calling the new shots, is what I thought it was.
It is, I'm telling you, I have not had one person get, I shouldn't probably say this on public fair, but that has not had a pretty bad reaction to it, like two, three, two days to a week of fever generalized.
On the shingle shot.
That was fine.
Did you? Good, that's one.
I'd like to go on record and say your public health nurse is red in the face. All right, ma'am, thank you.
You're welcome, okay, so one last, no, one last thing I want to talk to you about is, of course, the coronavirus, the elephant in the room, right? So I did speak with the gentleman that you talked to me about.
Yeah, good.
He sent me a very nice detailed email about his plan.
Options on things.
Uh-huh, which, he should be a planner for CDPHD, because it is, it is right online with everything that we're doing.
Great.
Yes, so everything that he suggested is exactly what we're doing.
I'm hoping you indicated that to him.
I did, yes.
We're already doing this stuff.
I did, yes, most definitely, so, um, we.
You know, he, he was just a resource, and you can feel, he just wants to volunteer to help.
Yeah, that's fantastic, so, and if, if the bad day happens here, again, knocking on wood, I will definitely call on them, yes, for sure, so. But I want you to be, to know that we are, we do have a system in place, in fact, we just drilled for it yesterday through the Healthcare Coalition. We have, there's a, a task force set up at, at CDPHD in Denver, primarily because Denver is still accepting traffic from China into DIA, so. That, that could prove to be problematic, contrary to some belief, the, the risk is relatively low for Custer County, for us to, even, even southern Colorado, for us to, to be exposed, impossible, absolutely not, it's definitely possible. So we have plans in place, we have resources, we, we've inventoried all of our supplies and our humans' resources, and we're set and ready to go, so hopefully we'll keep it open from the door.
No panic, but obviously Fort Carson's gonna be a quarantine location, one of four in the US, so.
Right.
They're gonna bring it into Colorado.
Keeping in mind, though, that that, Fort Carson, it's not like they're just gonna be like, okay, you family take a coronavirus, you family take a coronavirus, like, they're gonna be quarantined, they're gonna have all the appropriate air.
Purification.
Purification, thank you, that is necessary, and as, I posted on Facebook a little while ago, like, it's not like it hops on a cloud and comes to Custer County, or even across the street from the quarantine facility, like.
Shake a hand or sneeze on somebody.
It's droplet precaution, so that means essentially somebody has to sneeze on you, and it has to get in your nose or your mucous membranes, that's how you, that's how you contract it, that's why everybody's wearing masks, because that's what's keeping it from perpetuating itself, so.
Okay.
Okay, all right, now, thank you, ma'am.
Good, thanks for talking.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat's not shaking her hand, like.
I know, I'm just like, I'm the potted plant.
Yeah, it used to be.
Yeah, we're just booking out here at the table.
Guest over. Human resource, finance, uh, look at this wallpaper.
I know. Ooh, this is my first time at the new desk.
Is it, all right. Is it? All right. Good morning, how are you?
Good to see you, Donna. How you got to use?
Will you remind me?
I'm gonna keep it out of your face.
Do you have copies?
And I had sent, um, the handwritten.
Yes.
And so I brought one with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
So I wondered by process, again, I don't mean to encumber us, but I'd like to keep things above board if we can, is, is, um, I guess I'm asking you two gentlemen,
I saw.
We have agreed to address the handwritings in a little more formal matter. Do you believe this is something that we should sign and Donna could keep on file? Or is it necessary, is it for our information? I'm just asking.
My thought would be to protect Donna. So the question never comes up as to who authorized this and why did you pay it? Even though you know you're gonna pay your bills. If we initial it, just like we do all the other bills, it certainly makes sense to me to do that, to keep consistent with all the bills that we pay. And I'm really thinking about protecting Donna.
You would keep this on record somewhere?
And then when you sign these, that is my second part for the audit.
Yeah, that you can go back and say, oh, they're signed.
Could question why they're.
They're signed, it may come back on me, why did you sign it? Didn't the board know about that?
And this way we have.
Yeah, I kinda like the idea of at least initial it and then she can keep that on file, so. So I would move we, uh, author, uh, ratify the signing of the handwritten bills in the total amount of $57,356.12.
It's a different number than I have.
Okay, let me look at mine.
It's slightly different, I have 57, 560.48. So something's different.
Oh, I wonder if mine was printed.
It's such a minor amount, I'm not gonna worry about it.
Maybe I added the San Isabel or the Sanger to Crystal Electric bill after, since that was printed and I would bet like two or five.
You did, you did. So that's the one, Sanger.
So we'll need to print this one out, yeah, because I got that right at the last second and I did it late.
Do you want me to just print this one out now?
That would be great, I appreciate that.
Ms. Kara? Could you, uh, I think we just need one copy, don't we? Could you grab a copy out of the printer for me, please? Thank you.
Who seconded that?
Jay.
Adding that last second stuff.
We'll throw this one right.
And then tell me the, the amount. No, I'm good.
Uh, printer status not available, so let me go back and try it again. Sorry. So as pointer clear, oh gosh, she's still not, she's gonna come and go.
$57,560.48.
Yeah. So apparently I'm not online with the printer. So actually, I withdraw my motion. Second one's drawn. Thank you, sir. So the chair would make a new motion to say that we ratify the action of signing the, um...
What are you changing? Oh, the new amount? Did they get the new amount?
Yes, of course.
It's the 204.36 is added on right to the very.
Yeah, 204.36 is added on. So the chair, uh, I would move that we ratify the action of signing the handwritten checks in the amount of $57,560.48 for the month of January.
Second that one.
Sorry.
Unless you want to.
It's all right, no, it's great. The movement is seconded to ratify the action of signing the, uh, handwritings discussion. Hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, who carries? Uh, you're welcome to continue if there's something else, ma'am.
Are you keeping the?
Yes, and I can just put it in my book. Yep, I'll just put it in the ledger.
Do these need to stay in order for you?
Uh, no, I pulled them out so you didn't have to filter.
Thank you.
And, um, Rusty was just here, but I was here, so he was going to the shop and then he'll come back and give his, um, overview on there, so.
Thank you. So he did get in, huh?
And so I will have that. Um, you had said February 12th, I have not told him that yet, but I will when we go back.
Okay.
And so I've got it from 9:00 to 9:45, 10:30 and 11:15, depending on how it all turns out. Is 45 too long, too short?
I think it was what we talked about yesterday, 30 minutes to interview and 15 minutes in between.
Okay, so I will let you know once I have accomplished that.
Okay, thank you.
And then these were just little packets, I, I know Rusty has some questions. These were packets of what I had came up with. Some of it's just the normal, but kind of a different little questionnaire I had and some, um, regenerative kind of questions.
And then as follow up, I have questions.
I think the questions are approached yesterday.
No, I have no.
Those are just from, from my end and if, and if you just read, you know, if mine aren't a part of it, that's fine, just so you could see if there was something that jumped out that you might.
Make a copy of Rusty's too.
I've got it.
What we're talking about is we have a landfill manager who's retiring and we're in the process of setting up the, um, process to interview potential replacements.
And these are included.
You have something important to do.
Rating systems, questions to ask them to do the process. Eyes every applicant gets the same treatment, no one gets a preferential treatment. That's why we're, that's what we're doing now, setting up the procedure for this to occur.
And Norbit Gas, we did pay that 400.
Yes.
While he's doing that, what happens is each of the departments that come before us each month, they send a report ahead of time so we can read what they're doing and then we have some bases to talk some about what's going on. That way we're in the loop of what's happening and we can help them do their job better.
Oh, you, wow, left the record show.
She not pushing him.
Jackie Hobby's actually waiting to be called upon, which is highly unusual. I asked her, she had a question, she's had him waiting to be called upon. Uh, anything else, ma'am?
Nope, that is a fine.
Okay, uh, so you're going to talk to Rusty again this morning?
Right, I will, he, he's gonna run the road bridge since I was in here and then I will know where.
So you run the date, you can buy him and all that. Perfect, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, uh.
Be ready for the grilling.
You're gonna include your.
Let me go to the cell and see if my keys.
Ranking as well, or?
Um, I probably won't be necessary, but yeah, we'll, we'll, yeah.
You're welcome to if you want, as far as I'm concerned. Rank the candidates. If you'd like to, feel free to do that with Donna. Yep.
Donna? Do you want to?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna just run and throw my pitch right now. Okay.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, sir.
You had one of them. Said, I don't think you like those.
I'm trying to get.
Made up all your gummy bears.
No, that is not a true statement, sir. They are gone, that does not mean I am.
Ah, okay.
I'm getting ready to get on a new mission with that jar, so you'll have to stay tuned and watch.
Okay, we'll watch.
Yeah. Next up on the agenda is the Extension Staff Report. But, do you have a question, ma'am?
Yes, it was come to my attention after the.
Chair recognizes Jackie Hobby.
The airport boys were over in my office and they would like me to be with them on Wednesdays for my staff report, would that be possible?
They would like you to be with them?
Well, I'm sure that's what they said, maybe not in that many words.
Okay. The only part of that conversation we had was we were trying to balance out the number of staff reports on each day. We have six today, we had four yesterday.
Reason why is I helped the airport and so they thought it would be a good fit if I went with them after.
So if there's questions or whatever, we could, uh, I don't have a big problem with that.
That's okay. She, she needs to help.
So we had a motion to put you on Tuesday.
Did you want me to do this all the time or just every once in a while?
No, monthly.
And written reports.
I used to do it.
And, yeah, and then.
And then you guys told me that I didn't need to.
I don't know why, we, we had a lapse there, Jackie, I'm sorry.
Yeah, part of that motion was to ask, and I was gonna send you an email about all this, Ms. Jackie, was to ask you to, uh, provide a report ahead of time, just standard business, but.
I did that before.
Bullets.
Well, I'm, before doesn't come into the conversation today with me. I told these gentlemen I would let you know via an email and now I'm doing it verbally, so, anyway. Uh, so we had a motion, it was approved, gentlemen, um, what's your pleasure about that? Do you want to just unofficially move that or do you want to do it via a motion? Do you want to ignore the motion that we made?
I move we unofficially do it.
I would second your unofficial motion. So the movement is seconded to, uh, move the staff report for planning and zoning to Wednesday instead of Tuesday. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay, who carries, so that will be on Wednesday from here forward. Uh, would Extension care which day they gave their report, they, you personally?
No, no.
So to balance this out, so we just don't get overwhelmed, then I would move that we move Extension from Wednesday to Tuesday.
Second that one.
Oh. The movement is seconded to move Extension report from Wednesday, from the first Wednesday to the first Tuesday.
Thank you for being so nice.
Discussion. Hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, who carries, thank you, ma'am. So now Extension will be on Tuesday. Yeah, if we're not careful, we'll end up with eight reports on Wednesday and two or three on Tuesday, so.
They didn't say every month.
From this date forward. Okay, Extension. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Uh, well. Good to see you, you doing all right? Good. Good, good. I always have these thoughts.
Is this somebody?
Uh, yeah. So I'm gonna draft you a little note too, so I don't forget. Doesn't need to be part of the staff report, but.
Okay.
I'm afraid I'll forget it if I don't.
Great.
Yeah, how are you?
Good.
Pull up your report while we're, yeah. The floor is yours if you'd like to review.
I just kinda gave you an update on what we've been up to. Um, just a couple of classes and, uh, we had that financial management strategies workshop, which was also cold, but well attended. Um, and we're gonna work to try and provide some more of those classes. Um, and Farm Credit is just being really supportive of that, so. Uh, we wanna thank them for all of their support thus far. 4H enrollment is at 64 and we have some people trickling in. March 1st is the official, like you have to be signed up and all your projects and stuff, so. Uh, we'll give you a more accurate number on the first or the Tuesday, the first Tuesday of the month in March. Um, and I'm just excited, we've had some kids, um, starting to engage in the state and regional, um, leadership training, so I think that's really important to our involvement at the state level and then bringing that knowledge back to, um, our local members and kind of, um, just raising us, uh, in our presence at the state regional level.
Ooh.
Passing.
Just like school.
You allowed that?
Well, I was asking you to launch, I didn't wanna do it publicly.
Um, and I'm just really thrilled with Rachel, she's been like just a real go-getter and just anything I ask, she has it done in like five minutes, so it's really awesome. Um, we're starting a new Mountain Counties meeting and with Teller, Chaffey, Park, uh, Custer and Fremont and really, uh, looking at building mentoring programs through the Extension personnel, um, and then other ways to support. Uh, Kurt Jones is from Chaffey County and he's gonna help me get lessons learned from their fire, um, so that I can work better with Meredith on how to prepare for emergency support function 11 when a fire comes, so. That's, um, really exciting, cause I felt like I'm not sure what we would do in an emergency situation, so I think that'll lend a lot of, um, knowledge to us.
Good.
County Area Directors Meeting, these are annual. Uh, my boss kind of demands that I'm there, so I will be out of the office those days. Um, and then I've been working on local pollinators presentation, learned a lot. There's like 963 bees in Colorado, just in case you were wondering how many bees there are.
Total bees or total strains?
Species, yeah.
No, we got to.
Clint was very concerned.
Yeah, are you the keeper?
No, I'm not. But I'm allergic to them.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Are the African killer bees one of them?
No, um, they don't really survive well in Colorado.
Good, that's good to know.
Yeah, due to the drastic.
Only reason I ask is I got a bunch of them and between my chimney and the house flashing.
Oh, so they do live here.
And I had, uh, I had a beekeeper come out and try to get them and lure the queen away. That worked for a while, but they, they, they can't, that's, some paranormal must remain because they're back and forth. They even came out last week. Well, I was worried, I said, if I get up there, I don't wanna get.
If you have bees.
Yeah, we got lots of bees.
And I've been learning about like how to attract which pollinators based on what flowers, so it's pretty cool. Um, and then working with the Fair Board on their capital improvements project. Um, really just using my project management skills to try and get, um, uh, involved in that project. So that's exciting, um, and that's really it. Um, upcoming is just planning, um, MQA, the speech contest for 4H, um, the weigh-in and all the like those shooting sports safety and things like that, arranging those. So that'll kind of be the February, March timeline.
Good. You don't have a date for meet quality assurance?
I do, it's March 27th. It will be at the Wet Mountain Valley Fire Department.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, and then that's four to seven.
I would like to, uh, call attention to that because I think, again, it would be an opportunity for the commissioners to just come by.
March 27th.
27.
Four to seven. It's the last Friday in March.
Right, and so meet quality assurance program, all the. Fair, I don't wanna call them 4H, cause it's 4H in FFA, but all of the fair, uh, exhibitors that exhibit livestock have to go through this meet quality assurance program and CSU and, and, uh, the Extension Office does a great job, they got a lot of hands-on stuff, it's very visual, uh, it's pretty cool. If you've not been to one, I would recommend that you put that on your calendar and drift by there.
Is this at the?
Fire station. It has been at the Saddle Club Building, but now it's down to Fire Station.
Fire Station, yeah.
It's just neat stuff to just walk in and look at all the stuff they do. They got a lot of learning exercises.
You don't have critters there.
No, they're all fake.
They actually, yeah. They have.
Fake critters.
They have fake critters that they actually practice giving shots to in the neck or the shoulder or wherever, so it's pretty cool, I thought it. the shoulder or wherever, so it's pretty cool. I thought it-
It's just not normally my thing, but I think it'd be wonderful.
Yeah.
And then I wanted to talk quickly about the shooting sports thing. And before I do though, I wanna commend you and tell you, I think you're doing a great job with your management styles, particularly with that whole long-term strategic plan and the capital improvement plans and that. I know, I just noticed a change as soon as you got involved in that, it was like, oh my gosh, we've just brought this up to a whole nother level of professionalism, let's be accountable, let's make some decisions and let's get on the calendar and that kind of thing, so I thought that was refreshing. In that meeting, I've got it written down, the next meeting, are you planning on going to that in Springs?
Yeah.
Let me look real quick. If you wanna travel together, I'd be more than willing to do that.
Yeah, Diane Rose also offered to.
Okay. Do you have a date right off?
The twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
At ten. Ten or ten thirty at the Kirkpatrick Bank.
I've got it at ten, but I thought I saw something maybe at ten thirty-two, and that's in Colorado Springs at Kirkpatrick Bank, so I'll certainly attend that as well. So maybe we can all come. Is it?
Okay.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah.
Think that was all I had. Any other questions, gentlemen?
Yes, I got one.
Go ahead, sir.
We were talking to the airport boys a little bit ago and they mentioned they need a lot of volunteers and that reminded me that we used to have a aviation program, 4H did. And it would, and then we talked about mentorships with the OEM and other things, so it seems to me we oughta be able to come up with a neat program with, since Custer County's all, school's already working that, get a mentorship kind of thing in the aviation world, as well as getting the kids out there to help them and learning about what this, gotta need opportunity to help get on the ground floor of some of the aviation stuff that's going on. So Bob Jolly would be the right guy and Lynn McGree is a back.
Okay. Can I get contact?
I'll give you, I'll give you the contacts.
Um, do you know what kind of-
They do everything. They wanna go out and paint stuff, you know, like the segmented circle. What's a segmented circle? You know, kids can learn, it's a windsock and it's a traffic pattern in the airport, for, you know, a lot of things they can learn.
Okay. Yeah.
And other things they got going as well.
Great. They do have a community service component and traditionally that's been handled within the clubs, but you know, we can offer that as an opportunity.
Well, then the aviation thing too, what happened in the past, they had like a rockets and a model airplane deal, getting kids involved and, you know, there's a lot of board members out there that, for example, Bob Jolly is a former chief master chief, chief master sergeant in the Air Force. They've got a fighter pilot, they've got U-2 pilot out there that, you know, that is, can give you, go to, give programs. I mean, there's lots of things that are possible.
Okay.
Just need to get a discussion and see where it goes.
NASA, former NASA.
NASA employee at Johnson Space Center.
That's U-2, not YouTube.
Thanks, thank you for keeping me straight.
Um, yeah, and STEM, like science, technology, engineering and math is a big part of 4H.
Sure. Part of it, it branches out and, I mean, there's lots of, lots of neat things and they need the labor.
Yeah, the other thing quickly that I wanted to just talk about, shooting sports. Shannon Byerly's brother, Todd, is now in charge of the high school trap and skeet club, in my understanding is. So Sheriff Byerly asked me if the county would consider putting together some kind of a trap and skeet range at their practice range below the gravel pit by the landfill. So at some point I'd like to put that on the agenda and have a conversation with Todd about that. They've gotten some donations, recently received an electric trap thrower, but now they're, they're needing a place to conduct those activities. So I think jointly between the 4H shooting sports, the high school trap and skeet and the county, that we could work collaboratively together to come up with a facility.
Municipal trap and skeet range or something.
Yeah, so Shannon and I drove down there and looked at that. I don't know if you gentlemen have a chance to seen the sheriff's department shooting range, but it's down off of the hill, can't see it from the road, but, so. I will talk with Todd some more and see about getting on an agenda and we can talk about that. Obviously liability's gonna be probably the big concern, but they're very excited about that and schools involved, so. You know, our original conversation was what can we do to keep these kids from traveling to Penrose to practice and compete, because no, very few people will go down there and observe that during the summer for the competitions. And I just thought this might be a great alternative to that, so.
Yeah. I did talk to Shannon about that and whenever you get Todd, I'd love to be part of those conversations.
Yeah, he reached out to me this last week via email, so I'll follow up, or a text message, so I'll follow up with him on that. All right, anything else for Gwynnavere this morning? Thank you ma'am, really appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
All right. Treasurers report.
This is the, we saved you for the last.
I don't know, is that the best?
That's all right.
Before we get started, 'cause I'm afraid I'll forget, I meant to get this on the agenda today, or at least deal with it during Commissioner items and it got by me. Well, actually it's on the agenda, but committed fund balance is where I'm headed.
Right.
I spoke with Virginia a little about that this morning. You wanna share your thoughts or perspective on that?
I saw the resolution and that's way wrong. You can't combine, it's like taking affordable housing and putting the landfill in there and the, what was the other one?
Landfill?
Justice Center. Justice Center, yeah. It's mixing them, you can't do that.
Okay.
I didn't have separate committed funds. You're gonna do committed funds?
But you have to have landfill expansion fund, then you need to have the justice center fund, because if you put them all in one hunk, you're not gonna be able to keep track of it. And that's what our, that's what our idea is, to keep track of it.
Right.
So if you put, you could've done the same thing with affordable housing, said it was a committed fund and put them all in together and you're gonna have a mess. So you need to have separate funds.
Okay, so here was my conversation with the auditor, was really just exactly the opposite of what you just said. 'Cause I asked him about that. Can we have a line item for justice center, for landfill, for whatever? He said the way to handle that would be to create a committed fund balance and then track those within that fund. My initial thought was to have a fund for every one of those, because of exactly what you just said. And he said, that is not my recommendation. My recommendation is to create this committed fund balance and then track within that those entities that you wanna earmark money for. He said, when we do the audit, there will be a footnote on the balance sheet indicating-
You know what a nightmare that would be for us?
And really, you have, I mean, they're all within the general fund.
Yes.
And like my, so I have two funds that I track within my office. And they have a name and we just keep track of those funds that are within there. And then when we do, when I spend money out of there, then that's when we do a transfer. And I think that's what we need to do with, with the justice center and the landfill is have a landfill fund that's-
We already have, in County General, we have a landfill fund.
Right.
But I mean, to track, to keep track of that expansion.
But, yeah, this, the landfill fund will be different than the landfill expansion fund. And-
Well, she's saying keep it as a separate subitem within the landfill fund, so you could have a justice center or a expansion tag inside there that keeps track of that fund. That was what I heard.
Right.
And I think Sam already keeps, I mean, they, they know all those little funds when they do our audit, right? And so it wouldn't be any-
I don't understand, go back to Tom's thing with Sam, I don't, I don't know the mechanics of how you track it, but to me, it's like a checkbook, you know, you've got, you've got different categories that you keep track of and your overall balance is whatever the total is. And it oughta be pretty easy to, I don't know what, what computer system. I know we have a problem with antique computer systems that we don't change, it's hard to move things. But I don't know, I don't see a problem either way personally.
Well, Sam-
I like segregating them. That way there's never a question as to where the money came from, where the money's going into. Rather than just one balance and then try and keep an accounting as to what goes into that, I'd rather see the separate accounts. Is that what you recommend?
Well, and that's-
Or a subset here, but in the specific category. So, so the justice center would have to be a separate one in that, because we wouldn't wanna subcategorize it under something like the sheriff's office.
It's not like we're gonna have fifteen of them, we're only gonna have a handful, two, three. So it seems to me this makes more sense to segregate them. That's just to me, but I'm certainly not.
Sam wouldn't object to that, would he, Tom?
Well, his recommendation was to create this fund. What I would ask maybe is if could you talk to him?
Talk to him and figure it out.
You also need to get Donna involved, because she's the other side of this story.
Right. And I talked to Donna about that and she had also talked to Sam a month or so ago about that same thing, so.
And what did she say about having one committed fund and all these going in it, keeping track of it? Because it's like burying money.
Right. She is the one that said to me, you, we need to get Sam's recommendation on this. She said, I'll do whatever the auditor thinks is the right way to go. That's all I'm telling you is what Sam told me. So if, again, my personal preference was to do exactly what you were talking about and he said, no, this is what I recommend you doing. So if you don't mind talking to him about that, he will certainly know.
I did talk to him, but he didn't say anything about having one fund for all of them.
Yeah, that committed fund balance-
We were just talking about landfill stacking.
My, my recommendation, Virginia, is exactly what Tom's saying. Keep in mind the goal. The goal is not to be dipping into something that we're setting aside. It's like a savings account, but not a CD, you know, you know what I'm saying? It's just a way of tagging it so we don't accidentally get somebody saying, well, well, let's go get it out of this fund, we got a thousand dollar balance. So that was the only point, is just how you track it and make sure we don't, we have to physically vote, move it out of there for that specific use. Or if we vote differently, we can do that, but we need to make an effort to physically do it officially.
Yeah, he will, he will know. I talked to him Monday, so he will know what. But yeah, I would, might suggest you may say, hey, commissioners are talking about this committed fund balance, can we not have a line item that says landfill expansion, justice center expansion, whatever.
'Cause they're all in County General.
Right, that's right.
That's right. We just don't wanna be dipping into it in County General and get messed up somehow because of-
So anyway, I wanted to bring that up and so I didn't forget to ask you about your perspective on it, which I appreciate that. So I'll be the first to admit that I don't understand all of the connectivity between your office, Donna's office, general fund, what we can do, what we can't do, how we earmark. That's the objective, we wanna earmark this money in the long term. So if you don't mind calling him, okay, great, thank you. Okay.
That way when we, there's no carryover, you know, that we're gonna re-merge into the general fund, it stays there, so it doesn't get lost.
Yeah, but those funds would carry over.
Well, that's what I mean, that-
Oh, I thought you said there wouldn't be.
Well, the point, what happens in our funds now, they just get dissolved and they get at the end of the year and moved into the general fund.
Right.
We don't wanna do that.
See, affordable housing is actually in general fund.
Yes.
But you see it as a different-
Yeah, I get that.
Shows up as a separate line item.
And that's what I'm talking about with the-
Right. And that's what I asked him if we could do. And he told me, he didn't say flat out, no, but he said, this is how you should do that, so.
Well, let me make that a little clearer, what I really meant by what I said. At the end of the year, even the affordable housing line-
Is still there.
It's there, but we re-budget it with another-
Right.
In this case, we would, we would not be rebudgeting it, it would be carrying that money in that fund without merging it into the general fund.
Affordable housing kept their fund.
Did it, okay.
Yes.
All right, so that balance didn't get merged back into the general fund, okay. If that's the process we're looking for.
That's carryover?
It carried over.
Okay, we can go on then, sorry.
So let me ask this question, did the airport, they didn't spend then seven thousand their dollars last year, did it carry over?
No.
See, that's-
Well, no, the airport carries over, yes.
It carried over too, okay.
Airport carries over, tourism carries over. That's why, they used to be in County General.
That's what I thought.
And they didn't carry over, but now that they are not.
Yeah, I didn't think they did, so let me look.
That means they got their budget plus the seven thousand they didn't spend.
Right, now they have...see, they add seven, seven, five, two, one, sixty-five. That's the beginning balance this year from carryover last year. And then now they have-
Whatever the balance, okay, that's good to know.
Eight thousand seven hundred and eighteen.
That's, that's, that's what we wanna have happen with this fund.
The ones that didn't carry over on your beginning balance are all the zeros?
Right, okay. Well, then I think Bill and I both misinformed the airport.
We sure did and that's gonna help me, that's gonna help their attitude and their, and how they did it, so.
'Cause I didn't not, I didn't realize that airport didn't, did carry over, so any unexpended funds from 2019 was their beginning balance.
So it can still be used for what they allocate.
It's in that, in the report there, it says airport is its beginning, it's seven thousand.
Right, yeah.
Yep, that's good, thank you.
They will be encouraged.
They will be very encouraged.
They thought they lost that because they didn't spend it.
No.
They said if we'd have spent it, well, and we're trying to-
They can't stand-
We're trying to make them spend it timely, but if sometimes things happen and that's what happened in this case.
Well, and as needed, not just spend it.
That's right. Don't wanna have, just to spend it on pencils.
So...
Yeah, 'cause they worked real hard at adjusting the budget for this next year and they didn't wanna know that that seven thousand dollar loss was a big deal, if it had been that way.
Yeah, and I guess I'm learning something here. When we went through the budget process, does that, let's use airport for example, does that seven thousand seven hundred dollars come into play in consideration of their budget? I was assuming they were zero-based and whatever they were budgeting was from their own, so.
If they're gonna carry over from 2019, the budget should reflect that amount in the budget and it's still the same cap, not in a, we didn't expand their budget by seven thousand dollars.
But my point is, when we went through the budget process, we didn't know that.
We didn't know it would've been there.
Because I didn't pay attention to this. Had we paid attention to this, we'd have known that, correct?
That's right.
But I didn't, so.
And they, you know, so if they had that already allocated, that's fine. They made their new budget based upon the new year, haven't spent that, so that would've been there.
You do it in the budget in October, so you don't know what their end outcome is.
That's right. That's right. So this is good to know, they didn't.
So carryover dollars never really show up because we did the budget process earlier.
Well, in the budget process, you have what you spent the year before.
We assume.
What you have spent so far this year.
And what they got allocated to spend and that's why they didn't get it spent.
Right, so you've seen what he has sitting there, but you don't know what their expenses would be the rest of the year.
So that, this is very good to understand.
Yeah. Well, yeah, exactly. The learning curve for me is going up here because we can go back to these and say, okay, what did you, the year before, what was your beginning balance and go from there, so. Okay, motion to approve, gentlemen?
I move the approver report as presented.
I'll second it. It's been moving and seconded to approve the treasurer's report for January, for the month of- for the month of January. Further discussion? We never really did ask you if there was anything in here that was glaring, but, um, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Call opposed name.
Ready to go, Virginia.
Okay, ma'am.
We were only 15 minutes behind before you got here and you caught us up two more minutes.
Thank you.
So I, just so you know, uh, most likely one of us will have a motion to postpone the committed fund balance until.
To decide what's going on, okay.
Redefine it.
Would you be able to have a conversation with him before our 19th meeting in Wetmore? So I'll, most likely we'll move this to postpone it to February 19th.
Maybe she should work with, if you, if you get it resolved to something we can look at, maybe Clint can rewrite the resolution to be reflective of what you guys think is the right thing. So we got something to discuss.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that concludes the meeting for today. You know, concludes our staff reports. Unfinished business, gentlemen, that I'm not aware of? Okay, move on. New business. We'll allow public comment during the items of new business prior to the vote. Certainly, Ms. Ashley, want to encourage you, if you have a question, you just raise your hand and we'll deal with it, all right? So first item of business, good morning, sir. Consideration of signing a letter to the Colorado Department of Transportation. Commissioner Canada, would you like to take the lead?
Sure. I didn't, did you get a copy then?
Yes, that's what I just committed to.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
And this is the copy that I sent to you guys earlier?
Uh, yeah, this was the draft. I just took draft off of it.
And I didn't have anything to add to it. We all did that. And I think I would move that we accept this. And I guess we discussed whether we want to sign it now and this is our final one.
We can have that discussion during debate, yeah.
Okay, so I move, we accept this letter.
Been moving the second to authorize the signing of a letter of agreement to Colorado Department of Transportation on behalf of the county, which eventually will include the towns of Silver Cliff and West Cliff. Further discussion? That was my thought, that if this motion passed, we would sign it. We'll pick a copy, uh, and then circulate that.
That's the right way to do it. And I can hand, run it.
Okay. Question for counsel. Does this need a date on it, sir?
I think it'd be better if we dated it, yeah. It's what I thought, because it'll start floating around in there.
And which one did I sign?
So maybe quickly we can, do you have a digital copy of this, Karen? Can we?
Where would you put it? You put it in the body or?
I think we'd put it below the signature lines.
I am. That would be the easy way to do it.
It'd be different date signing. It should be a separate date.
I've got it. So let me pull it up.
You could put it in by hand.
You don't have to scan it. Uh, well.
Put the line in. Put the line in, because that.
We hand.
That, yes.
Correct, because we're not, we don't know the date they're gonna sign.
Right. They can sign their own dates.
Give me just a second.
That's a great idea.
Computer's being weird.
What are you doing, sir? Just carry it?
Yeah, I'll do it. So the date line should be below the signatures, counsel?
Yeah, that's what I would suggest.
Just put date in a line.
This is so far, essentially, we've convinced you not to go into public office.
You gotta sit here. See, this is just half the day after day.
Date signed, counsel, or just date? Because it really is a date signed.
Date signed.
Best way to do it.
Putting it on each one?
Yeah. Yeah, because the signature's gonna be signed at different times, so. So let me send this to the printer again. So please come on, sleep.
Hand it here and I'll throw them in the trash.
Clint's copy as well. I did four, better do another one, huh? You need a copy?
I do.
So let me print one more. I only did four, because that's what my print setting was.
Mess things up.
So will you want a final signed copy or are you just concerned about the commissioner's signature?
I don't have a signed copy. It'd be nice.
So we will have to assign that.
Or the original. What are you gonna do with the original?
I'm gonna, the original.
The original will go around, yes. We're only signing one copy today.
Right.
For the original. So Commissioner Canada would.
But who's the original gonna live with?
I don't think it matters, really. I mean, Commissioner Canada's gonna be the point of contact, so it really originates from the commissioner's. We'll keep the original here.
We'll keep it, because we're representing the county.
I think we'll assign three of them, each one with an original.
Three originals, man? Yeah.
Could do that.
Could do that, too.
Yeah, because I'm doing one with an original as well.
Why not?
Yeah.
Why not?
Thank you, ma'am. But sound system was really sensitive.
Yes, it is.
What happened?
We'll let our sound technician.
Whoa.
Adjust. So, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries? So, uh, we'll sign three copies. So if you gentlemen want to sign your own copy, then we'll pass them around.
No, no, it's just you. You get to sign three times.
Okay. Sorry, I was thinking we.
It had three signatures. It's just normal.
Well, Clint's too. And so the intent then would ask Commissioner Canada to bring back a signed copy.
Right, we're adding on Kelly's standard.
Give it back to Kelly, huh? He's gonna take them back to Silver Cliff and West Cliff.
You forgot to date it?
It's dead, isn't it? Thank you, ma'am.
Paid attention if he does his signature. Everything else is dated. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thanks for catching that, Kelly.
That's why we paid the big bucks.
So the next item of business is consideration of creating a committed fund balance. I would move that we postpone this item until February 19th. Moving the second to postpone discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries? Would ask Ms. Carrie to put that on the agenda for the February 19th meeting in Wetmore. Next item of business, consideration of selecting a number of candidates to interview. Let me make a quick phone call here. Hey, Ms. Resti, did you have a chance to come in? Okay, all right. We'll wait. Thanks. Okay, bye. Donna's on her way over. Sorry. Uh, Ms. Kara?
Yeah.
Could we get four copies of these questions, please?
And I sent you one copy for five copies on there.
On my email?
Yeah, I sent you. Can we take a break?
Uh, yes, we can. Uh, Donna's on her way over, so this would probably be a good time. We will be in recess for five minutes. The record show it is 11:06. And the next item of business is considering, pardon?
You get all the copies of his questions? I got an extra one here.
Oh. Yeah. Um, consideration of selecting a number of candidates. Come on in, sir. Are you waiting?
This is whatever Donna.
Oh.
Oh, she went to the printer. She's coming up.
You got the note from Ms. Donna about the 12?
Work for you?
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
If it does, I'll be here.
So probably not necessary, but the sheriff wants to remind everybody confidentiality. We will not be referencing any names of applicants today. Really, we're just talking about the number of applicants that we feel we need to interview. So I guess, for lack of anything else, I'll start. Um, I reviewed the applications. I would recommend we interview three. Commissioner Canada? Sorry. Commissioner Prince, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, we, I, I debated that. I, I felt two, but I, I can go with the three, Tom.
Well, for now, let's just get it on the table and then we'll.
Yeah.
Your thoughts, sir?
I'm fine with the three. I think we all have.
I think that's fine, yeah.
Um, what do you think, Resti? You've had a chance to review the applications.
Three.
Three? And Ms. Donna?
Can I just show you the sheet and it kind of ends up?
Okay. Um, we'll just review it. Okay. So the candidates with the X's were representing what?
A choice, a.
Oh, ranking?
Yes, to be in.
So that, okay.
And not in any order except one person's.
Okay, I got you.
Because of confidentiality and the laws of employment and stuff, we're very, very careful about giving names and talking about that. That's why we do like numbers and stuff. Can I have my third?
If you want three, you can have.
I've really thought about this third.
So then if there's, there could be four. Interview them.
Well, we can interview whatever number we want.
You can have, maybe everybody picks.
That's true. That's why I thought we'd start with how many would you like to interview and then we'll compare that to this and maybe a change, but, um, Ms. Kara, would it be appropriate for us to make copies of this so we can look at it and not have to pass it back and forth? Thank you. Because your, your point may come into play easily, so. She gonna make some copies for us?
Scotty get up at four again? I don't think so.
Does that side know we're still gonna go to the Sheriff's Office yet?
Yes. And we're about to wrap up here, so I may have Kara call them.
Yeah, let's do it as early as we can.
Do they have, do you know if they have lunch ready for us yet?
They do not.
The prisoners haven't finished.
Unless you want, yeah.
I can almost guarantee you they don't. Thank you, ma'am. So you had made a note there. I didn't actually see that when we passed it around. You had listed four names.
By the numbers that it was four, because that's.
Okay, all right.
The even, the evenness of it.
Got you, got you, okay. Um, so I think we're okay to refer by candidate number for this conversation, gentlemen. Are you okay with that?
You bet.
Can I revise my suggestion?
I, just where I was headed, but go ahead. Yes, sir.
I think we should interview four candidates, the top four candidates, um, because it's not just an idle agreement. There's multiples, number three is one. So I'm, I would recommend we do four.
Yeah, I was actually thinking of making a recommendation too, but it wasn't gonna be the same as you just did, sir, so, um.
What were you gonna say?
Well, I was, based on this document, I was prepared to change my suggestion of interviewing two, which I was going just the opposite direction than Commissioner Prince was headed, but I don't have a, I don't have a huge buy-in really one way or the other. I.
The way I read it, I, I, I got, I can understand the other two that were added by other people's perspectives. However, when I looked at them, the top two stuck out more than any of them. So I don't know why, especially given where some of them are coming from and the time that we would take and impose upon them too, I don't think it's fair. I think, I think it would be better to cut it down.
And when you say your top two, we don't know who that was.
Correct.
Because you didn't rank those.
I did.
Not here.
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't put it on there.
So I don't, and it may not matter. I don't care. But let's say your number one or two ranking didn't show up on two other people's, it I think would be relevant.
Right.
But, um.
That's right. So, you know, that's, and how you want to do it.
You said candidate one and two?
That's what I was thinking of because of the way the X's fell out on his sheet.
And that's the way my ranking came out.
Oh, wow. Okay, so, so you were one or two on these?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just didn't.
I don't, I don't want to get way in the weeds, but part of me wants to justify why I think we should or shouldn't.
You don't have to, Tom.
Interview, but.
We, if we have candidates we feel are the most qualified, we'll interview. If candidates that we feel are not qualified, we should not interview. Let's not waste their time.
That's right. That's where I'm.
You know, the only reason I said four is because candidate three and four each have the same amount of.
Right, which is not.
So I was thinking, you know, I would hate to exclude, I would hate to go, I'd either go to two or to four. I would not want to do three, like I originally mentioned, because candidate three and four have the same amount of X's.
True, but the X's by themselves aren't really critical because it's ranked. because it's ranking.
That's right.
Let's say that, let's use Commissioner Candace, that his candidate number three happened to be his first-ranked person.
Right.
So, as is the situation with myself, my second highest-ranking person...
Well, maybe this would be better if we just took a moment and ranked him on him, and then look at this again. Would that be okay? Because I have my ranking, but it's not listed on here.
I think it'd make it a little easier.
I see it on yours.
You wanna rank yours? If you don't, and then you can share that with us.
Yeah, here's, here's.
And Rusty, you're welcome to do the same, if you wanna rank yours.
I need to look at my folder, I...
Do you want me to go grab that?
Yeah, let me see that real quick, so I wanna make sure I didn't screw up the folder.
You wanna tell me your ranking? Do you know it? If you have, if you don't have it, it doesn't matter, it's not... I don't think it's absolutely...
One to ten or something?
No, first, second, or third. Sorry.
I may, I may have put my X wrong, because I needed to see my folder. So, let me see.
I mean, if, if it came down to it, the question would be, if we're only gonna interview two, which ones would you recommend us interview?
One and two.
Okay.
What was the number? One and two?
In that order, candidate one was your first rank, two was your second, and four was your third.
Right.
Okay. I think that'll happen, don't you?
I do.
Okay, so Rusty, let me get Rusty's in. So, he has a one on...
I'm gonna eat my...
Did you say one was one?
Very changed, uh, changing thing here. There's J's.
And...
Just in that order.
Okay.
I know from my previous life, we would rank all these, we would add up, and then whatever the rankings were, that's... Which, we can say, we wanna interview X number, and then we figure out the rankings to figure out who those are, but...
I'm comfortable if you wanna do two. So, I think we're all pretty much on the same page.
And I don't wanna exclude Ms. Donna. Again, you're welcome.
And I was right in there with y'all, so, yeah, I just, this...
I really do.
Y'all are of my mind, if it just depends how many.
Donna, I care what you have to say. I just, I don't care what you said, I care what you said.
Yeah. So, I had my X right, I'm just getting my order right here.
And a side note on landfill items. We have a pre-deposit notice for the... It's your reimbursement. Way to go, Kara.
Oh, yeah?
So, it's sitting out there, but it'll probably hit tomorrow or the next day.
So, we'll get that from the grant boards.
So, we let a road and bridge person, when they retire, keep their phone? Does Rusty get to keep, like, a skid steer?
Yeah, he does.
I'm with you.
So, this is your number two?
Pickup, skid steer.
I think the pickup.
A grader for the driveway.
We fought pretty hard to get you that.
I got used to that pickup.
That's good.
In a short time.
Okay, oh, cool. Uh, so, given this...
Thanks, Donna.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Yeah, I, well, I'm okay with interviewing two. For obvious reasons, I hesitate a little, because...
Well, the third person does have the votes?
I think there's a bigger gap.
Let's see.
No, you're right.
Okay, I move that we... Just if you, I don't know if this takes a motion, but I'll just do it, so we can get this amendment along. I move that we interview candidate number one and candidate number two.
I'll think.
We move to second to interview two candidates, those being candidate number one and candidate number two. Discussion?
Are we... Yes.
Go ahead, yeah.
My definition would be, would we, if we do that, will we be unfair to any of the other candidates who applied? Or will we be, will we be responsible in the way we handle it by not giving the two other candidates who have received votes an opportunity? That's my question.
And I've got two thoughts about that. Number one, had we not reviewed the applications, then certainly we'd be remiss.
I agree.
Number two, for me personally, if I felt super strong, I would be arguing to amend your motion to three.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the same way. I think candidates one, two, and three are qualified. I think candidate, there's a bigger gap. You know, I didn't, so I could go either way, but I'm good with two.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to sort this out. Candidate three and candidate four, same emphasis put on both of those candidates, really, but...
Well, I thought...
Well, not by...
I thought, I thought, I thought three was better than four.
But not better than one and two, is that correct?
Yeah, that was...
Then, one and two makes sense. But I sure don't wanna shortchange anybody.
Well...
I'm certainly not gonna interview all six candidates. That makes no sense.
You wouldn't have any problem either way, would you?
Doesn't matter to me.
See, I'm just, you said they didn't ask.
We're just interviewing the two candidates, I think that's fine.
Can I throw in my two cents?
You may, please.
When I hired my elections person, I was not going to interview her. And then somebody said, "Well..." "You, you know, once you talk to her, it might make a difference." I hired her, and that was one of my best hires. Because her interview was different from her application.
That's true.
Yeah, and certainly there's that... Possibility. Now, so, let's just say, I'm just trying to play this out. Let's just say we amended the motion, and it passed to hire three, then we'd have to determine which three. So, we'd have to go through that process again, because there's nothing automatic here.
Well, if you're gonna go with that logic, you really ought to go to four. Because candidate number four got the same amount of...
Right, that's true.
Yeah, but a different ranking.
I understand that.
So...
I just don't wanna waste their time.
Well, and, I don't know. I guess it wouldn't be a great concern of mine about wasting their time, because we're talking about a half hour.
No, it's a bit...
And they, I, I don't know, I... I keep sorting out differently. I don't mean to be argumentative, but... If we decided to interview three, then we'd have to pick which three. I don't automatically say, "Well, let's do four, so we don't have to pick three." See what I'm saying? But...
Just looking at this paper, I can't differentiate between candidate three.
Oh, see, and I do, based on how they ranked. You didn't have, you're missing a ranking there, so...
Well, that's a good reason.
Right there. Sorry. Yeah, you need to write his in, because I think it'll make a difference for you. And then Rusty's was bad order. Sorry. So, now, maybe what, what I was saying might make sense to you. I didn't realize you didn't have those, so I'm good with two. So, the motion is to interview two. Further discussion about that. Either one of you folks have anything else? Further discussion, gentlemen? Harry, none will proceed. All in favor of interviewing two candidates, those being candidates number one and candidate number two from Donna's sheet, in no particular order, correct? You just assigned a name and a number to them? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? If she carries, can I have those sheets back, then, gentlemen? We give those back to Ms. Donna. So, you would move forward on trying to get an interview date and time?
At 9:00 AM for the first one?
Lot of crazy stuff.
Thank you, ma'am, thanks for doing that.
Thanks, Donna, appreciate it.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't realize you didn't have a ranking.
I didn't have all the information, that's why I was wavering.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, um, will you make efforts towards that today yet, or...
I should know by then today.
Alright, so if you would just shoot us an email?
I will, but I'll just send you the interview schedule.
Okay.
Mostly.
And given that, gentlemen, are you okay with staying at nine? Do you wanna move that to...
Yeah, I really...
That's the way I think, we just jump on it.
That's fine.
And so, then a question, follow-up question is, do we counsel? Is that a workshop? Is that executive session? What would that look like?
It's not an executive session, but it's confidential hires. I'd call it a workshop, but not open to the...
So, we did before, didn't we?
Right.
Again, we kept it to numbers, not names.
And when we ended up getting Kara, we did it that way?
Yeah.
Do, then, do we... Sorry.
Carrie, you were just a number.
So, then we go through the process, but we make a determination at the following meeting.
Correct.
So, we need to have on the agenda on the 19th to offer a contract for landfill manager.
It's not a contract.
No, sorry.
Position.
Offer a position, yeah. Donna, you were gonna... And, yeah, I mean, so here we go. We could call a special meeting.
Following the workshop.
You said that should be done for one of them.
And maybe...
Keeps it cleaner.
I would really recommend we do that. I think we counsel.
Chair of entertaining motion, that's it.
Okay, I move that we have a workshop.
No, special meeting.
No.
Oh, workshop, I'm interrupted, sorry.
It's the workshop on the 20th.
No, 12th.
The 12th. And upon the culmination of the workshop, we will have a special meeting for the sole purpose of selecting, making an offer to a replacement...
Landfill manager.
Manager, yeah.
I'll second the motion. We move to second that we schedule a commissioner workshop on February the 12th, starting at 9:00 AM, and subsequent special meeting at the conclusion of that. I don't think we need a time, but it'd be hard to pick one. And a subsequent commissioner special meeting at, at the conclusion of the workshop for the purpose of offering a position to new landfill manager. Discussion? Actually, I need a second, sorry.
You got a second?
Oh, I did?
Yeah. You seconded it.
I'm restating, sorry, yeah. Further discussion, gentlemen? Counsel, are you okay with not having a time on that, as far as the posting goes?
I think we'd be better to have a time. But we just keep the doors shut until the private workshop is finished.
So... We're allowing 45 minutes per interview, correct?
And I had wrote nine for one, 9:45 for another, 10:30 discussion, and then I was gonna write...
11, 11 o'clock?
Okay, so now, not nine... Sorry, your discussion time was what?
At 10:30, at the, the finish of the second interview.
Okay, to discuss after we'd interview the candidates. And should that discussion should occur during the special meeting?
Referring to the candidates by number, or...
Right. So, we're okay to discuss that, right? Or should we do it, that discussion should occur in the special meeting?
In the special meeting, you can have your discussion, because you're gonna be reaching a decision ultimately.
So, then we would interview at nine, 9:45, conclude at 10:30. So, then we could schedule a time at 10:30 for the special meeting. Does that make sense, gentlemen? Because I was thinking about the posting, if we didn't have a time...
Yeah.
For a special meeting, we probably should have a time. If we're running a little late, then we're running a little late. Does that make sense, Ms. Donna?
Yeah, just so I can...
So, nine, 9:45 to interview, and then commissioner meeting at 10:30. Now, all of that really is gonna be predicated on whether or not we have any candidates to interview. Because we're still on a tentative basis until we get confirmation.
Until I call. So, I will, as soon as I get over there, I'll start calling.
Well, let's talk about that in just seconds, since we're still talking. What if one of them can, or done? Do we just auto default to the next one? Why?
No, I think then we have to negotiate the date between us and the candidate.
And if, if, if one or both could not make them, would a conference interview be acceptable?
One of the candidates is from out of town. Gentlemen, your opinion, thoughts on that?
We've done it before.
We have. I'd really like to talk to them and see them.
I do, too. How about, and maybe we talked about this, what about the 13th?
Well, we have the upper arc.
You're gonna be gone, right? Are you going to that landfill training, or no?
I was gonna wait, and if we had somebody on board, I would take them down there.
You wouldn't go on your own?
No, probably not. You're going down there, because I already know the inspector and their pretty permitting person that are gonna be there.
Yeah.
So, I would basically just go down and introduce them to the new manager.
So, you may or may not know that there's a landfill training in, in the Canyon City area. The Canyon City Area Recreational District is putting on a landfill training on the 13th.
You'd go out there and just bury somebody hired, who could...
Yeah, and, and ask them to go. Couldn't really make it a requirement, because we're probably not gonna put them under...
Be wonderful, if it could work out where they could go.
You would be available if they, if we had a new hire. Uh, if we can't make the 12th work, then I would recommend the 13th as a second date. Are you guys okay with that?
Upper Arc and saw that Slida is on the 13th.
Upper, uh, Upper Ark Water?
Water.
Oh...
So, I would say, if we did that, I'd rather go the 14th.
Yeah, and I'm out of town, I don't wanna meet on the 14th, but I didn't have a upper arc written down.
Yeah, upper arc's...
And then early childhood development is later in the afternoon.
Yeah, and that's a week, I, you know, and not, yeah.
Well...
Let, let's face this, if one of them can't, then we can decide where we go with it.
I will, as soon as I know if they're available, I will just let you know real quick.
And upper arc starts at one, don't you?
Yeah. Yeah, that's true, upper arc starts at one, and they leave here at noon. So, we could probably make the 13th work.
Probably make it happen.
Yeah. Let's see, if the 12th does, then let's go ahead and fall back on...
13th for a secondary?
Maybe 8:30 on the 13th, if we need to come a little bit earlier.
Just to make... Keep it tight, you can get out of here in time. Don't have to decide whether I end up going or not.
So, 13th's a secondary date? Non-clock? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Rusty, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Now, if they quit the construction, you can make pretty good time going to the 13th.
We tabled this, right?
Uh, yes, we did table that. We had a motion to table the... The committed fund balance, correct?
Correct.
Any additional items come before the commission this time?
One thing I wanna discuss, I can do it on a public stuff. It's just the letter to C.D.O. That we looked at.
Correct.
And all that has is, um, this is written per their words that C.D.O. gave them. And they took out the 48 strands, etc. So, this is just a formality to get C.D.O. to react to the county actually asking for the right-of-way, not some contractor.
I'm fine with the letter. The only thing I would recommend, since we just are working on this intergovernmental...
I wanna run this by the, the two towns.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure we were good before I did that. I don't wanna go over there and then change it.
Um, yeah, I haven't read it word for word, but the part that concerned me is still in here, and I'm still concerned about that.
Which ones?
And that is in the third paragraph. "In exchange for C.D.O.'s authorization for use of its right-of-way, we provide, we propose, we propose to provide C.D.O. with a minimum of two conduits." That means we are gonna pay for those conduits. It reads to me that way.
The program, I don't know how, maybe we can say it differently. C.D.O. will grant the right... CDOT will grant the right-of-way, and that's what they do normally, is they provide them an empty, two empty conduits for their use after the fiber, or after we pull the whole thing, that's all that means.
It was by conduit for them.
Exactly.
That's part of the program, it's paid with the funds that we get from the grant, so we would be the.
We're gonna, we're gonna pay for the conduit for them.
The pro, program does, not, not.
Well, we'd be in Cruster County, Silver Cliff, West Cliff.
Right, it's part of the grant, once we get the grant, then we.
Then we are the ones who will be paying.
That's correct, it's part of the cables, it's part of the, yeah, that's exactly what it means.
Uh, so the grant then, might be a better way than saying we, but the grant dollars will purchase three conduits.
It may be more than that, I don't know, we gotta see what the engineering says. They're pulling in, they're gonna, they're gonna arrive at whatever the bundle is of fibers. And then, in addition to that bundle, is gonna be two empty conduits for CDOT to use in their future. If we wanna reword that, I can get it reworded. This is, these are the words that they pulled off of the CDOT's programs they've already done. This is not, this is not Carmel talking, it's CDOT's words on the stuff they work with other communities.
So CDOT's really saying they need two conduits?
That's correct. And the, and then in exchange, they grant us the rights-of-way for those two, and the.
So what they're really saying is, let me just, let me just kinda summarize the way my little pea brain is going. What they're really saying is, if they will let us use their right-of-way, provided our payment to them would be to install two additional conduits for them to use.
That's correct, and then that's why the next sentence says, and then give us a cash value of that right-of-way so that we can use that as a.
As a grant match.
Grant match.
I get that, and I'm fine with that.
So that's all that means.
So it's kinda like, we're kinda like, they're getting two conduits.
At our labor and our expense.
At our costs and our labor, but it's their right-of-way. I mean, that's a workable situation.
That's right, and that's what they do with these other, they've done it thirteen times according to Rivera in the past.
And so there's no language in here about, other than the last few words in paragraph number three, there's no language in here about us putting in fiber. This really just talks about the two conduits for CDOT. It says, I know it says for our proposed fiber installation along state highways.
I agree with you, I would say two for.
Two for them, and how many for us?
In addition to the ones that are required for our program, maybe that's a better way to clean it up.
Those words would be per, I would feel very comfortable with that.
Okay, let me, we can re, re, have them do that, and I'll, just circulate this.
Yeah, because it's.
I don't want them to come back, I'm sorry.
That's correct.
I don't want CDOT to come back and say, wait a minute, you're only getting one, and we really need three, or whatever we need.
And here's the problem for me. This is not gonna be an open ditch installation. So for every conduit, that's gonna be plowed in with a dozer, it's gonna be bored in under whatever roads.
It's gonna be, well, I gotta get, I don't know what the technique is, Tom, they're gonna make one pass, and it's gonna lay in three, four, five, eight conduits, depending on the machine, I don't know. That's, all I know is, it's the program they use and the process, so let me ask that question. Because they're not gonna run three separate times on the right-of-way, laying down each conduit separately. It's not how it works.
I mean, if you looked at what was just done on our highways just recently, it's the same right-of-way.
So here, here's my understanding.
Who knows how many they put in there?
This is what I think it is.
One conduit.
It's, it's one conduit with the fibers. This is, this is a, one conduit that has three different conduits inside it. So it's laying one pipe, I don't know how big it is, not that big, but, and it goes into the trench, and they've got two empty conduits so they can pull their own cables. Our cable being a separate conduit.
A separate conduit from theirs.
Yeah.
Which would be another plow job.
No, no, not, I don't, I didn't mean it that way, it's a separate conduit within the pipe itself. That's what I understand.
The plow's gonna need to be big enough to accommodate two and as many as we need.
Put in three conduits, that's correct. And so, so that's what it means, I can have them rewrite it, and I asked them to keep it simple and to the point with what CDOT was requesting, so I can, I can run that by them again.
But I still think we need to be very cognizant of what we need out of it, not just meeting the demands of CDOT.
That's right. So we'll say, in addition to our, in the, there'll be two.
To the CDOT conduits.
That's right, to two CDOT conduits along with the municipal, or the county's conduit for our program, is what.
However many that takes.
However many that takes. Let me, let me make sure, I think it's only one, because you can get a thousand fibers in a little tiny area.
I get it. Yeah, that was, that was my concern, was it just didn't address that, and I didn't, again, this was the first mention of two conduits for CDOT.
They actually, they did mention in, in another meeting, Tom, but it's always, they've always said, they will do it as long as we give them a cable to use, and that's how they've been stated, so. We've got two, we know they're asking for two, and so we're getting it for it to find.
Okay.
All right, and then what's, what I wanna do, we don't need to have a special meeting, I just wanna coordinate this with us, and I'm gonna take our agreement to, what it looks good, and I'll make sure the mayors agree before we do anything with this letter, before I send it down.
So this is coming from you, correct?
Right, it's representing the county and the municipalities, this is operating to our.
It's red line, Mr. Carmel, right?
It's Rivera.
Rivera.
So, um, to try to streamline things, I would recommend we edit it right now, and that's the edit you carry, that's the version.
That's good, that's, yeah.
Then we don't have to come back.
That's fine.
Let's do it. I go on paragraph three, "In exchange for CDOT's authorization for use of its right-aways, we propose to provide CDOT with a minimum of two, two-inch conduits." Those are huge.
That's it.
In addition, and then I would add to the, end of that, in addition to the conduits.
Required.
Required.
Right.
To fulfill the project.
Right.
So two, two-inch conduits, one to be used for power, the other designated for fiber optic. And, after the word use.
Yeah.
And the appropriate number and.
Fur, yes.
Number and size of conduits to meet the needs of Silver Cliff, West Cliff, and the county?
No, just our fiber broadband project is all we need.
I just think the project, I mean, this whole thing's about the project, I mean, I think that's very clear.
So, I'll read that sentence again, "In exchange for CDOT's authorization for use of its rights-of, right-of-way, we propose to provide CDOT with a minimum of two, two-inch conduits, one to be used for power and the other designated for fiber optic cable for CDOT's future use."
In addition to.
And, or.
Yeah, go ahead.
I had written, "And the appropriate number and size of conduits to meet the needs of the project."
That works.
And then we also request CDOT establish a monetary value, probably should be of the CDOT right-of-way.
Of the right-of-way.
Yeah, not on the right-of-way, but of.
Of the.
For our proposed fiber installation along state highways fifty, sixty-nine, ninety-six, and I twenty-five. So my question then is, why is highway ninety-six in there?
Because it, remember, we talked about, in order to meet the requirement for the rural grant, you have to have ten, anything less, above ten and one, ten one, ten up, one, ten down, one up. You had to have ninety percent of the population, so we have to get a count. CDOT's getting a count of what they're supplying that capability to, and so down ninety-six is an empty space that is not gonna be connected except by this program, so they'll plow down, which accomplishes two things. And one was, this program, in addition to meeting the problem we have with the wetmore outage, to be able to connect that phone up.
So the initial conversation was to close this ring, it didn't have anything to do with highway.
That's right, that's correct.
So now highway ninety-six is in the mix.
It's part of the program, yeah. And that was in order to meet the, the requirements, to get the money. And that would include the money for all of this, not just the loop. Which, by the way, also helps defend the requirement, because in order to get more reliable capability, they need to close the loop regardless, C, CenturyLink does, they got terrible connection. It's not as reliable.
Well, I wonder if CenturyLink then is going to be willing to consider tying into the fiber they just plowed in?
No, they're, they're willing to actually use, if in the end, they would be willing to use additional fibers that we would have, that, that, that. Our, our fiber is gonna include some, what they call dark fiber, anyway. And CenturyLink, I've talked with Tim and discussed it in our meetings, is more than happy to consider other fiber for their use as well. They would purchase them.
If this project comes to fruition, then we would be plowing another set of conduits on highway ninety-six. And tying in.
And CenturyLink can buy a fiber and use it for their use as well if they wanted to. But we're gonna tie it in for sure to the phone issue.
And is that conduit, I wonder if they're gonna try to tie into CenturyLink's conduit that they plowed in down in Greenwood?
Maybe, I don't know, that's, see, that's something that has to be worked out when the, when you get to the point. This is the grant writing stage, once they get into the engineering for that grant, that, that'll be determined.
Okay, you want your name as Bill Kander or?
No, I'll put William R. Kander in there. Good. I think it's good.
And so this is going to Pfeiffer?
That's our formal request as a government entity, representing the whole county and the municipalities, and that's what they need in order to.
And so you'll take, sorry, and so you'll take this to both the other two entities before you send this.
Fiber, really, we're bringing it to major loops.
We had a motion, correct?
It's a long-term project, but just later.
Okay, further discussion on the motion to approve the letter to Bob Pfeiffer? As, as we.
Uh, actually, you didn't have any motion on that.
Okay.
You didn't do anything, we were just talking about it.
Oh. I move we accept the letter as amended and send it, coordinate it with the counties and their towns and send it to CDOT.
I'll second. They're moving seconded, Doff writes a letter to be sent to CDOT, eventually on behalf of the three entities, further discussion. Do you want me to send you guys a copy of this amended letter now or not?
Yeah.
I don't really need it now, I would like it once it's signed.
Once it's signed.
Put it in my file.
I'll sign it, once I get the coordination.
Right, once they all agree, send me a copy of the signed one, that's what I would prefer.
I need a soft copy before we just do.
Further discussion, I'll send it to you. Hearing none will proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? Aye, posed nay? Motion carries, I hope I just didn't lose it. Uh, give me just a second here.
Anybody call the sheriff up? He's expecting us at noon.
I did not call him, so.
Do we like him now?
Do you mind, Tom will be there about.
Tom will be there in ten minutes or so.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
I had saved it, I didn't realize what name it saved it under, so.
You got it?
Yes, so you want, we'll print this out.
Print it and send me the soft copy.
And again, do we need three copies of this or not?
No, I'll send the signed one back.
One for Silver Cliff, one for us.
Yeah, why don't we make that, that would be good.
And one for.
Once I get it signed, I'll get, I'll scan it back in.
Anything else, gentlemen, come before the meeting? Any public comments? Sorry, we didn't ignore you. Any comments, questions? Okay, good, thank you for being here today.
I thought you'd be asking questions, yelling at us or something.
I'll second the motion, it's been moved and settled to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed nay. Motion carries, meeting's adjourned, thank you for being here.